Do you have access to your presentation?
Are you able to, like, you can dial it over real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah. You can do that and you can save the reservation right here.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, it's different every time.
It is. Yeah. No, it's. Someone here too.
Yeah, it's ten minutes, I can't. So, all, you know, baby flyers.
Sure. So, last place, thank you. Yeah. Good, Barbara.
Okay, thank you. Was that? It's a good meeting this morning?
Yeah.
Good meeting. You know, I'm.
Um. It was certain, so.
Tuesday, aren't you awesome? November seventeenth?
Yeah, I thought you were going.
That's true.
Yeah, I might be gone. Because it's really close to Thanksgiving. Yeah, so I'm gonna ask him if they could hear on fifteenth.
Yeah, with.
That morning, or else.
Here. We know we're gonna be here.
Exactly.
It's thirteen before meeting, but whatever. I think this is more important.
But the seventeenth.
It's, it's really close to the holiday. It was kind of a hard big job.
She said they'd pizza out of the air. Cause I said, I didn't hold that.
Okay, cause a lot of people travel. Yeah. For Thanksgiving, so. I would try that.
How are you? Good.
I said, four days.
I thought that was Jessica's and so I was gonna sit next to her. Cause we're always joking about how we never sit Thanksgiving. So, it's Melissa's, so. We'll see what happens. So, Jose, when are you trying to go last?
Sunday.
Okay, so for that week, then you're done.
Sunday, and then I come back on Friday.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah.
Where are you going in Alaska?
Uh, Anchorage is where we're flying. But, uh, we're there for like just one night. And we're going to the town that she's working for. Starts with W N. You have to go in, and it's not contrarian. I think Scott Shaw.
My kitchen.
I'm just gonna go to the back.
Oh, yeah. No, wait.
I think that's the end of the town.
Okay.
Sure. So, I think there we go.
Hello, Barbara. On time to do a seat?
Two years.
You didn't get here early enough to get your candy stash. Like I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't do that as bad, but yeah.
Sure.
I really like look forward to it. Cause they have good candy.
They have good candy.
You do.
Don't be sorry.
Okay, really good.
We're right on time.
Okay.
Are we recording?
Sorry.
Is everybody ready?
You bet.
Welcome. Uh, to the October fourth study session. Barb knows with the mayor. And we'll go around, starting at my left. And just to introduce yourself, please.
Melissa Youssef, Mayor Pro Tem.
Olivier Volzmann, City Council. That was a magical, so many.
Kim Baxter, City Councilor.
Jessica Buhl, City Councilor. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, and I will start with just a personal statement of mine acknowledging the legacy of this land. This represents my view, and it is not a council statement. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community morals. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Njuju, Dene, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is therefore important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective, without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in my acknowledgement of this legacy. Thank you. So, today, we've got on the agenda, Islamic integral intervention. We've got future new business and review of the agendas going into. So, we'll wanna make sure we look at, uh, the eighteenth agenda. Then we'll have a presentation on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We'll have a, is it Durango update? If time allows, we'll take a ten minute break. And then we'll come back, uh, and have the community support, uh, recommended block, blockings. And that'll be some presentations as well. So, does anyone have any, uh, difference with this agenda? Great. So, let's open it up for new business. Are there items that people would like to discuss?
Do you have one, Mayor?
Sure.
If I can, I know that's a kind of strange coming from me, but, uh, I did have a conversation with Jeff Souzer with Powerhouse. And he did mention to me last week that they are going through their strategic plan and would like to see if there would be, uh, an agreement with the council or at least direction for us to work on scheduling a joint session with them and their board to get the council's input on their strategic plan for the powerhouse. Uh, as we know, the powerhouse is on city land. Uh, and it's a lease with powerhouse, so it may be a good time to, uh, put that input, uh, to the board. Um, I told them, you know, there could probably be a possible different ways to bring the council. It could be a joint meeting between the directors and council. Uh, it could also be where maybe council has selects two people, uh, to go and meet, or how that would work. But that there would be options, and that would present it to the council if something was, if there was direction for that. I could have a staff begin working on coordinating schedules.
Great. Is there support?
I think it would be a great idea to meet with them, see where, you know, their vision is and just strategic plan. Coordinate their great part of our community and obviously, we have a little city land, so.
The proposal had longer time period. It was almost like a half day.
Uh.
Attending their workshop.
It was two hours.
Oh, was that?
It was two hours. Usually, that's kind of what you'd ask for a timeframe of meeting. Probably try to keep it to two hours or less. Uh, seems to be a good portion.
So, would we have a regular study session, of course?
I would use it as a, it would probably be outside the study session. Uh, our study session calendars are packed.
Right.
Around the rest of the year, so, uh, would look at doing it, um, outside, uh, if there was the ability to do so. Uh, again, there were like timing, it would be just coordinating schedules with their board and the council. So, I feel exactly when those first dates would be available, uh, for that. But before I even made that phone call, I wanted to make sure, uh, that there was a consensus from the council. That's something that we would like to do.
And I'm fine with either, we wanna choose two people and then maybe do like a briefing at a, at a city council meeting, or if everyone wants to attend. I'm fine doing either. I think it's.
I think the issue with doing two is they're not really speaking for all of council, which is.
Right.
Which is so more informative. So, if we could get a, a majority at least at the meeting. And, and I'm happy to attend.
Okay.
Recognizing our schedules are.
Absolutely. So, we're trying to offer flexibility. Uh, if, obviously, if more than two wanna go, that's absolutely fine as well. Uh, just trying to put out options that wasn't convenient you to, uh,
Yeah.
busy schedule, which we know is coming up with holidays and budget workshops already coming up, so being mindful.
I think it's a great idea. I'm a little, the only concern that I have that pops up for me is there are other groups in our community also who may then feel that having two hours of council's time to support them in their strategic plan is, is helpful. And I, and I can see why that might be the case. So, that's, that's the only concern I have about, you know, setting a pattern or a precedent.
Sure.
But I agree that particularly since our leasing city land and they're such a fixture in the community. And I actually would love to see them do something bigger and better than they're even currently doing now, so. And I'm.
Go, go.
I'm supportive.
I'm a huge supporter of Powerhouse Science Center. I've served on the board, I've been president of their board for years, contributed. I absolutely appreciate their vision, their commitment, impact on the community. I also am feeling, um, like I have a lot, uh, we have a lot on our plate, uh, just as counselors. Um, and, um, having been very integrally involved in the Powerhouse Science Center, I would love it if other counselors wanted to, you know, you know, spend time. I've been in their retreats. I've created, uh, I've worked with them on that myself. And so, I feel like I'd like to, um, kind of focus on city council work. And, you know, I'll probably reach out to Jeff and talk to him about that. But my, my thought is that I, um, I'm feeling compelled to focus and really focus my efforts on all that we have in front of us, which honestly is quite a bit for me. Anyway, that's my personal.
Would it be helpful if they had, um, we had pre reads, so we had questions to be considering and so that we could be thinking about it? And is, would it be helpful if we looked at one hour instead of two? We could do one.
Um, I'm, my, my own thing is I'm, I'm, I'm leery of adding on meetings, additional meetings to additional days for myself. But again, I think if, if majority of council wants to go, I, I, I think it would be awesome. Powerhouse Science Center is great. Like I said, I've been at myself actively involved before I was on council for years. Um, and so I think it's phenomenal program, phenomenal. And honestly, we've had community members that have contributed hundreds and thousands of dollars to the program and all the initiatives, and maybe there are ways to make it better. Believe me, we've, there's been a lot, you know, lots and lots and lots of different discussions around it, so.
But we've got, uh, we've got consensus, so.
Yeah.
Good. Um. Other new business? Well, I have some new business, and I sent a note out that said I would be bringing this up. Um, you know, as counselors, we have three appointees. And, uh, our job is in part to ensure their success. Well, you know, we hire, we, we evaluate, and then if necessary, we refill the position. But I, I think for me, I take that, uh, I, I view my main responsibility as how to support our, our three appointees. And I'm concerned because we are in a position where, uh, and we've seen the emails where one counselor has been providing direction to, um, uh, staff, uh, making requests of staff. And that, that's in my mind undermining the city manager and his authority. And this has happened three, at least three times. And I'm concerned, this is not the form now, but I am concerned about finding the appropriate way to, to discuss when we as a council think that something is, um, could be handled differently or in a, a better way. And I'm trying to figure out, or to bring this to council. Um, how do we make certain that we as counselors are not undermining our appointees, but rather supporting them and abiding by, um, the code of conduct, which we all agreed to when we were sworn in? So, I, I posed that question. Uh, I think we are all aware of the email. Uh, it's a public document. I'm sure the public can ask for them. So, how do we propose addressing?
Um, okay, I'll start, and then I can like usually start and like just blabber a little bit and then maybe focus in, in a second.
We love that.
Oh, do you? Okay, good.
There's just time to take.
Okay, great. Um, so this topic is tricky for me. Um, and especially, um, there's two parts to me, like me, who I am as a person, and what I believe in, and how I conduct myself, and how I want to see our staff supported, and how I want to support each other. Um, and so, I don't want to, like whether it's like me personally filing, uh, filing an ethics complaint against a city council or whatever, that is something I would never do myself. And so, uh, well, I wouldn't say never, but like, that's not something that I would jump to and do. And so, to like, you know, see these emails going across, it's disheartening and it's, um, it's, it's causing turmoil and I would say a little bit of like toxicity, um, within our, within city council. And again, with our staff, like I don't, I don't appreciate, um, the tone with staff, the tone with the city manager, the tone. Like I don't, I don't support it and I don't appreciate it. And I think us as council should, I mean, just like I do with my personal employees, right? Like, it's our job to make sure they're performing like at the, the best that they can for our city. And I think that we should expect that of ourselves. Um, and so, I, for, we got an email from Mark Anderson. Um, I can talk about that email, right? It's public record? Like, his email? Okay, okay, just making sure.
I've been waiting to respond to that.
I know, I didn't respond to it. I can talk about Mark's email that he sent to council. There's no reason I couldn't, right?
I'm not sure that I saw it.
It's not in the public domain.
Um, anyway, we had a constituent.
It's not in, it's not confidential, it isn't public.
Okay, but I can say, okay. We had a constituent, uh, send us an email talking about, um, the negativity that they see on city council and during city council meetings and stuff, um, which is very apparent, um, sometimes. And it's what's, and he recommended, um, mediation. And for the last year, which I kind of, yeah, exactly. For the last year, we've been trying to do mediation to be more effective. But Counselor Bosman refuses to do mediation with Kim, um, during their whole. Like, I saw the emails where you said you weren't gonna be doing it.
No, it's went to mediation and then mediation.
We did one mediation.
Factual information.
We have not done mediation.
But we both agreed to mediation. A mediator was identified, and it didn't proceed. So, that's not because of, uh, Council Baxter or Council or myself. So, just to clarify the facts.
Okay, so do keep in mind, and I appreciate your review. You're sharing, you're sharing your views, and this is not to discuss it now, but yes.
Right, okay, so I'm just trying to explain like why I'm frustrated. Like I, and where I don't, I don't know how to go forward, because it's, I feel like every time we try to go forward, we get stopped back. Um, for example, i- if I were to request that Devin send me something, and then Jose were to be like, hey, Jess, you can't direct staff, please go through me. I would be like, oh, my gosh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I wouldn't bow and demand, uh, open, uh, open record request to demand every single email between council and staff get looked for. Like, it's a waste of staff time and it's a waste of energy, and it's just being like, you're right, Jose. Like, I shouldn't have, uh, directed staff. I'm sorry, like, let me fix myself and, and go on and forward. And so, that is where it's, it's getting to be a little bit, um, like, okay, I, I'm not quite sure that, how to be transparent if I'm just trying to be, um, like, be okay and be forward and support the staff the way I feel I should support the staff, when as a whole, they're not feeling supported by all of us. I guess that's what my, my struggle is. I don't know.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You started new business with a question to us. That's not usually how we do it. So, I'm curious what your stance might be, like, what, what are you trying to bring forward?
Sure, well, my, uh, my issue is, I believe that this particular behavior is undermining the city manager's authority and his, um, and his ability to, um, do what we've empowered him and expected to do, which is to supervise and build his team. Um, and so, I think the question is, is this isn't a one time, this isn't a second, this is for multiple times. And how do we as a council respond to this? And so, my own view is, I would like us to set a time to actually talk how we, in particularly in this particular ca- case. But if there are other cases, for example, you know, uh, if we have an issue rather than just filing an ethics claim, how do we actually wanna handle that as a group? And it goes back to that retreat we had, but we're not abiding by that, those, that kind of framework that we wanted to create. So, I'm asking, my view is, I think we need a structured conversation to address this situation, particularly where I feel the city manager is not being, um, supported by all of council.
What?
I think that the city manager, um, made his points clear and well known in response. And, and that's his, you know, uh, his prerogative and his leadership, um, which I saw, um, in the email back and forth. Um, so, I, I also recognize that, um, it sounds like there was attempts to have, um, mediation, which I appreciate. And I wish that would have, uh, been able to take place. I always think that communication is really helpful when you're able to do it amongst each other. I'm, um, I've been disappointed in our public display of uncivil discourse. Um, what, I'm, I'm calling it uncivil discourse because I don't really have a better, uh, verb, uh, or adjective for it. Um, but I, I think that, I guess, my thought has always been, you're always gonna get five different counselors, always. And they're, everybody's entitled to their own opinion and their own approach. And some might be more off putting to others that, you know, uh, different approaches affect different people differently. Um, and I guess I feel like there is, um, we, there, there's an attempt, I think, on part of council to try to control behavior, and you can't do that. All you can do, in my perspective, is respond civilly and appropriately, um, inquisitively, and move forward in the better interest of the city and the community. And, you know, I, I think that if we get entangled in this issue. And, you know, I, I think that if we get entangled in this issue too heavily, when we have so many issues on the table, that we can have the ability to affect positively for our community. I, I'm, I don't want to get, I don't want to get bogged down in an issue that is going to take us backwards. I'd rather move forward as productively and positively as we can. It's my perspective.
I, I would like to add that I appreciate the city manager's response. And we'll add that that is the third time that this has happened. So the question is, if the behavior continues to be repeated, what happens then? So, and I get, I appreciate also Melissa, your comment about, you know, not trying to control. It's one thing not to try to control behavior, but if we're, if, if we're aware that something is specifically stated in the code that we do not interact with staff at a certain level, and as a counselor, if any of us continue to do that, then what is the appropriate, then when is it actually appropriate to take an action? So I'll stop, but you know, because I, because we have to support.
elective officials are, you know, something you need to kind of think about. And there are actions that the public takes too. And that's also in reelection, yes or no? That goes for all of us. And obviously recalls that, you know, us, you know, we, you know, I think, I don't know. To me, it's a slippery slope here, trying to control people.
Other thoughts, Olivia, Kim?
Go ahead.
I'll have to.
I don't want to act like you're not here, so go ahead.
I'll have to, please.
So I understand what you're saying, Melissa. And I, I think that general behaviors of city counselors is not something that state counselors, it's just, it's your general behavior. But I do think that when we have code of conduct violations, that have been pointed out numerous times, that's a different conversation. And I think that takes city council leadership to deal with and to have a discussion about. Because unfortunate, well fortunately or unfortunately, there's five of us, but we are acting as a body. And when one of us is violating the code of conduct as agreed upon by communicating with staff and by also not including the city manager when they communicate with staff in direct ways and other ways, then that's being done as a body. So the body is responsible for that. And I think that that's one of the things we have to look at. So we have to take responsibility for the body's actions and we have to take accountability for what's going on. As far as public actions in this case, this is not something that up until today, the public has had any knowledge of. So I don't know how that could, could be one of the actions that would probably be taken. I personally, as a manager, want to support our appointees and I want to support our staff. And it's very, very difficult for me when there's continuous violations that's coming from a body that is a part of me, like I'm a part of that body. And so I don't, I don't know how to handle that. I don't know what to do with that. And we as a city council need to manage ourselves. And it's not staff's responsibility to take care of something that we're violating as a code of conduct. So that's not our employees' job. And I personally think Jose has done a very good job of expressing when things happen so that they can change. But there seems to be a continuous pattern and I'm, I'm not comfortable with that.
So this is kind of turning into a discussion, by the way.
Yes, that's where it was.
I also had new business. I had an item. So.
So I was, a conversation, one conversation. And.
Well.
Olivia, just to say yes.
Yeah, I, I think this is just another attack by certain counselors on me personally. That's the way I see it. And you referred to an email that everybody knows about. I'm curious what email that was. Was it about the RFP?
Yeah, I guess I think so.
So I sent an email requesting for a document and I replied to all for an advisory board to which I am the liaison. I happen to not see that Jose Madrigal was not part of that list. And I get an, an interesting email back and I'll read out my response. "I'm sorry," saying that I should have copied or sent a direct to him to get an instant readily available document. I'll read it out. "I'm sorry you feel this way. This was discussed during the city council meeting and was just to confirm the document would be part of the meeting. In addition, my email included many people of which I thought you were one of them. I hope this didn't cause any inconvenience for you. If this council really believes that that is a violation, then we should really take action." I, I think, no, I'm speaking, I am speaking, I am speaking, I am speaking. This is an example of poor council behavior. And the topic that you bring forward is, in my opinion, distracting from what we as a council should do, is address issues of importance in our community. I, I just, if you want to attack me, do it in a, in a fair way. Ask for all communication that any counselor has made to any staff.
You did that.
Can I finish? Can I finish?
Sure.
This, it continues, it continues. This is an example. The community that responds to us on poor council behavior is pointing out other counselors' behavior against me that is a very poor ethical or civil nature. And I think if you believe that that is a cause for, and put it in perspective and be fair to every counselor, not singling out the one that speaks up and raises his concerns and voices, analyzes the data and comes up with his opinion that might be different from yours. The point is, you bring up a topic, do you wish to discuss it? If you want to discuss something, I'm always open to discussing.
Your point is, is heard. I, I would like to say that what we're discussing, also the city manager's whole response, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but basically he points out that it has been brought up and discussed on previous occasions. I don't think we have, in this meeting, not raised any other issues of behavior. It's about, it's about respect to the city manager and his control or his chain of command with his team. And so the behavior is looking at this as being a pattern. You may not think it's an issue.
Mayor, we are having a discussion with this.
Thank you, I'm going to go forward. So the question is, is there support for some kind of discussion in the future on how to hold each other accountable to the code of ethics?
I support like strategies, like learning, I don't know if that's from Dirk or where, but like strategies on how to respond. And that, or, and like maybe a mediation between all of us on how to like act and how to, you know.
Okay, you made it.
Yeah, how to hold each other accountable.
Some, some future efforts.
Actually, I think we've done that. And it actually went south really quickly, immediately thereafter. And then we did it again and went south again immediately thereafter. So I'm not certain how much difference that's going to make. I think that, I think personally that general behavior of counselors is up to each counselor. But I do think that when it comes to the code of conduct and the code of ethics violations of that type, council needs to consider.
And so are you suggesting a structured conversation going forward or not, or something?
Whatever council wants to do. I'm just, that's just my, my opinion.
I think, Melissa, I don't think you've changed your mind.
No, I don't.
And counselor us, because I don't think you have. So I also do support us finding some way to hold ourselves accountable, particularly when it impacts our appointees. Between counselors, I understand we have different views of what constitutes appropriate. And to your point, Melissa, I actually do agree that in those regards, we can't necessarily control that. But we, in my view, I support something that helps ensure that our actions support our appointees.
So are you asking for a meeting then?
Yes.
Is there three people supporting? Sounds like you're supporting different types of meetings, but there's a meeting. And do you want to do another special meeting or do you want to do a study session topic? Or do you want to have this in our public meeting? So everybody, you know, on TV? Because that's also what typically happens.
I, I would support a brief session, perhaps with Suzy Fair coming back and seeing something. Or not, not a full day. I'm not, I don't have an answer. I would support something that allows us to have a structured conversation. But I may be the only one. So I think, Jessica, I'm not certain if you support something like that.
I just would like to know, yeah, structured conversation around how to support our appointees and move forward. So we're not filing, you know, ethics complaints and open records requests and like, you know, productive, being productive.
We, as we know, and this council has seen it, and you know, whenever anyone wants to file an ethics complaint, they can. And that's a, that's, that's not a city council, as far as I've ever been on initiated thing.
No, no.
It's, it's an individual initiated thing. So just so you all know that.
I mean, I'm not saying you can't prevent someone from doing it.
But if they want to, anytime anyone wants to, they can.
Sure. The, the code of conduct does say that we would try to work out differences in advance between each other.
That's not, that's not a, a general behavioral disagreement between each other. Code of conduct violations are not with those. So that's a totally different conversation than working out this inability to work.
And what you're going to have to do, if you guys are suggesting that there's a code of conduct violation, first and foremost, is prove it. Okay. And from what I'm hearing on this table, there's just, there's just different perspectives of that. My point is, do you really want to get in the middle of trying to go back and forth and doing that? I don't. I really don't.
Well, I'd like to see the behavior stop. That's what I would like to see. Because I don't, I don't think it's fair to have Jose have to keep responding in this manner. And so I would like to see the behavior stop. And I'd like to see accountability for that behavior. It's not the first time, as these ladies over here have mentioned. So I would like to see accountability for it and I would like to see it stop. So we don't have to deal with it anymore.
On that note, I'm going to say that I think we, I'm not hearing support for something else. So I can say it's raised. I wanted to see if there was support for a future discussion. There's not, from what I can tell. So on that note, oh, city manager.
If I may.
Yes, please.
And obviously, I think that it's kind of been part of the room discussion, which occurred. And obviously, I think it's important for those that are listening to understand where the concern comes from. When we look at a city council, city manager form of government, there's definitely a code of conduct and reasons of why certain things are mentioned. This one specifically was a, an email directed as a manager, not a department level employee or department head. And it was a ask that had a request to place an RFP in a council packet. The director who happened to be copied on that email had a question in regards to, that was brought into my attention. Can we do this? Is this something that will get us in trouble financially, policy-wise, and ask our finance department for it? The reason that these things go through the city manager's office is because the staff here would love to do everything for you. And a counselor asks something and they go when they do it and they don't realize what it may be. Luckily, this one was checked through, that RFP gets placed in a packet and the finance comes back and works that, hey, you shouldn't have done that. It's a violation of this policy or we've just done something. The responsibility ultimately fails on me. Therefore, I look at it as protecting the city, just making sure that whatever information is being asked for has gone through the appropriate process. Hence for why I said that when you're looking at asking staff, for me to be copied or at least for that request to go through me so that I am knowledgeable enough to say, hey, I think I know where you're going, but staff can't do that right now or maybe other times to check. Fortunately, they checked on this one. Can't say that, that would happen all the time. And from my partnership of it and what y'all have appointed me to do, is to make sure that we follow our policies, that we follow our laws, that we keep the organization in compliance with everything. So henceforth, I just wanted to make sure that that was placed out to where the concern is. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. On that note, you guys.
Well, I, I think it's important when people make accusations or statements like this to be fair to all counselors. And if you believe that not a single counselor at this table has communicated directly to the department head or a staff employee, then I think that would be a good first step to analyzing that. Because it is my belief that there's plenty of, not plenty, but I, I know there are emails from council directly to staff that take place. And, but that goes too far. It's just singling out one counselor because I, I, I can only assume why, but.
I think we've, I think we've covered this, though. I will say we've made a decision not to move forward. And I wanted to give Jose the last word, but in that regard, so at that note, we've discussed it, we're moving forward. Melissa, you had some new business.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you for the clarification, Jose. I, we should have asked you first. I was going to suggest that at the last meeting, we talked about further discussions on a parameters around a managed camp. I wanted to kind of bring that forward again because at the end of that meeting, it was four hours of just intense meeting and process. I think I was tired and there was just a lot of emotions going on. So I wanted to clarify that for staff. Because for me, as I think back on understanding the parameters of a managed camp, which is something I, I would be interested in doing at some point, I want to clarify that at some point. I want, I really, I feel like we have a lot on our plate as a council right now, and especially for our staff. They're juggling so many balls in the air. And I know that the whole community knows that we went into executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition and lease of various parcels for a, the purpose of a permanent managed camp. And that's all I'll say publicly because that's what the agenda said. We know that we went into executive sessions for that purpose. And my thought is until we get farther down in the line with movement in that area, I think that we can hold off on the discussion myself, at least that's my perspective, on parameters of exactly what a managed camp should look like and not look like until we get further down the line on that. I would suggest maybe even a couple months down the road. It's not something I was wanting to throw on your plate to add to meeting next, this month, for example. And I just wanted to clarify that and bring that forward for council discussion and clarification for staff. Because I think that they're balancing a lot, even just the results of the executive session itself. And so I just wanted to bring that forward. So your new business request is, is that the parameter discussion on a managed camp come at a later time, not, not this month. I would like to have it. I, I think that it's too premature to have it until we move a little bit farther down the line with where that location might possibly be. That's my perspective. And instead of getting into a discussion, let's just talk perspectives and how we move forward. So they get, they get an idea.
I do have a response, but I'll wait to get from.
Go ahead.
So, so I actually, Melissa, would say I thought about that meeting. And I also would say that, you know, I appreciate you wanting the plan. But I think from a point of view, it's hard to develop a plan if you don't know how in the counselor is on the, as a whole on this. How, how supportive are we? What does that, how, what's the maximum level of kind of financing we're willing to consider for all of this? And for what period? So I see it as staff needing that direction. If it were me, I would want to know, okay, you know, are you in for just this amount or not the money, but just this kind of level? Is it a small group? Is it a group that's, that's wholly committed to moving into temporary housing? Are they sober? You know, what are the parameters that you want to work with? You know, we've heard people say, other counselors say, oh, I think you need another low barrier camp. And so you're going to see very different thinking if we don't have that view. So I actually think with the budget coming forward, we have to have a sense of what are we financially committing to? What are we legally committing to with issues of if we create something? What impact does that have on us? And then issues of eviction as once you've set up a residence somewhere or where else. So, so I'm concerned that we actually need more information.
You know, but I, just to throw out there and then you can go, because I know you were, so sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, that's fine.
But I mean, just those issues. Okay, we could probably spend at least a half hour on low barrier. Legally committing to eviction, budget, sober, you know, this could be a day. This is a day. I mean, and, and, and that's just us who are in, you know, we have the experience we bring to the table, but none of us has been involved in developing, you know, managed camps. So in, in any case, I think that there are going to be difficult discussions around people, ourselves, who I don't even consider us experts. So I'm concerned about also how we will manage those conversations when we have them. I'm saying push them back. And I'm also even concerned about how we're going to manage them when we have them because we're not. Because we are who we are.
But I know, I appreciate that. I do wanna just come back and open up it. I do wanna real, recognize, we're not content, but we do have to set the policy, which is, I keep describing it as how far in are we on this subject? Is it the business of city council to be, you know, a huge portion of our time? Or what portion of our time addressing this community need when we have everything else? So I think for myself, I look at that as direction.
And financial resource commitment. Huge potential. Okay, sorry, cool.
You know how I feel. I mean, you know, that what I'm looking at is vision and policy. And I don't think we've all agreed that we support a managed camp or don't support a managed camp. I don't think we've all agreed that we support the purchase of property or don't support the purchase of property. I don't think we have that direction yet. And I, I think that for this community, homelessness is going to have a huge impact on our quality, but as we go forward, it already is. And not having any direction from council, I think, has confused people. I think it has made it generally very difficult for them, not just the unhoused, but our community members. I think it's made them anxious. And I think it's their fear about what's gonna happen because we have given no direction. And so that's how I look at it. I'm, I'm not espousing a certain direction or a certain policy or a certain choice. I'm suggesting that we need to have those conversations so that there is direction and there is a policy that's come from councils so that not only staff, but our community members and the unhoused know what the, what's happening. Give some, some clarity about where things are going so they can make their choices, they can express their opinions. Right now, all the opinions that are being expressed aren't based upon any facts. They're just based upon, who knows? And I, I'm not certain that's fair to our community or to our staff. And so I'm, that's what concerns me. And that's why I think these conversations are so important, which we're not having, at least currently.
I'm, I, I understand what you're saying about giving direction and making a policy. My issue still stands is that until I'm given a, again, I haven't gone and researched every option on homelessness, what this community does and what that community does and what's been successful and what hasn't been successful. I need someone to come to me and say, this could be successful and it was successful for this community and it costs about this much money. This was successful or wasn't successful and this is why and it costs this much money. Like, I need some information. And I would almost, sorry, Jose, push it back on staff, when you need council direction, like you've come to, just like you did last Thursday, we've come to a point where we need council direction. Then you bring it to us and we have a discussion around what you need council direction on. I fully support, like I said last time, Sanda, Sandia, I just said, Sandia, I'm like, I'm never gonna pronounce this, sorry. Regular briefings to city council, like come and let us know what's going on, come and let us know what they found, come and let us, give us information. So I'm building that database of information in my head so I can make better educated decisions. I can't sit here and have a discussion with you guys about homelessness and what the, what does success look like? When I, I don't know the answer to that and I don't know if any community knows the answer to that, to be honest. And so it's just gonna be another meeting on homelessness where we go around and around and this could be a great idea and that could be a great idea and this could be a great idea. And I think I want a primitive camp and I think we don't have primitive camp, like, I don't know. I just feel like it's round and round all the time because I don't have numbers, I don't have information, I don't have, I don't have that stuff. And so until we have that and Jose comes to us and says, I'm in need of council direction, I will sit here and support and have a conversation when you need council direction about policy or what, like, what we need. But I am not just gonna talk in circles when, without the county being part of the solution too and without, without coordinating council being part of the solution. Like, I want us all on the same page because, and us changes in April. And so what us thinks like right now, it looks like success could be different in April from what that council thinks is success.
And the council changes two years later.
No, I get it, I get it, but we don't have a piece of property right now to even talk about what could potentially go there. And, and so until we do, like, I don't know, I just.
I'm gonna call on Olivier and then I'm also gonna ask Jose a question, which is to think about, but I'd like to hear from Olivier. Do you have the direction you need to prepare a budget for us that addresses homelessness? And that to answer now, I'd like to hear, but I wanted to give you a heads up on that question. Olivier.
Yeah, the homeless topic, every time there has been a meeting, I have pretty much said that I'm disheartened about the lack of progress and that we haven't even defined what a managed camp is, whether it's a tent managed camp or a more transitional managed camp with structures. And I agree that it requires involvement from the county because it is a regional issue. I think also I agree that we need, we are not the homeless experts. So we need better feedback and, and recommendations from Sandia or group on that topic. I also think that this is not a new topic, it's four years in the going and we should look back on why we are at this point, where the purpose is currently closed or being closed or vacated at this point. And waiting at the last minute and have to deal with this urgent situation. We spend a lot of money on Band-Aids to fix symptoms or to prevent symptoms. A lot of the symptoms are, in my opinion, a consequence of the lack of progress we've made. So we need to learn from our mistakes and do better. That's one. In the end, the, the result should be, will be, in my opinion, a property or two properties. And no matter how complex we try to make this, we need to have a property or multiple properties. And a property is not necessarily a cost, it is also an investment in the estate that anticipates growth, et cetera, for our community and annexation maybe or whatever.
May I ask you?
My, I, I am always open to discuss this, but I think like last meeting, the executive session was not an urgent topic because none of these properties, any property that is being, would be brought forward is not gonna be purchased and set up as a managed camp, no matter what structure, within three days. So the executive session was not an urgent topic and the other topics that were discussed, I mean, if, if, if we think we made progress during that meeting, I think we, we created more friction than anything else.
Can I ask you for clarity?
To, to, to answer the questions, future parameters, I, I would like to have the county on the table, if possible, and have better guidance from professionals in this field.
So you, you did mention we haven't had the conversation of how to define a managed camp. And you've raised that before. And so I just wanna clarify and then we, this, around this table, there's been discussion of, oh, managed camp, well, it doesn't look the same to everyone, even though we have a depth, you know, we have material from other groups. So I'm trying to get a sense from you, Olivier. You might have a view of a camp that has lower barriers or it's, it's still as managed. Do you feel right now that you need, as a council, before we go to the county? Because we're gonna have different views, could have different views. Do you feel we need to have better clarification on the definition of a managed camp? Which is what you just said, but I'm wanting to hear that, how, how does that clarification come about?
I, the answer is, I've said it during many meetings, we as a council have not defined or council and county have not defined what a managed camp is. If you ask my personal opinion, you need both. You need a managed, low barrier tent site, camp, campsite, as well as a more transitional, smaller sized transitional campsite.
So I'm trying to think of a new business rather than defining it. It's just, do you support a meeting to get more clarity on policy issues around the homelessness?
I am always open to address this topic.
I think the answer with the county and involvement from Sandia and county. And if I can clarify my perspective, since I'm the one that brought it up.
You brought it up, yeah.
I really appreciate the perspectives, you know, council, that Councilor Beal brought up. And I do think, I, I'm, what, what concerns me about opening this up to a, our meeting is going around and around and around. I don't think that we're professionals. And I like the idea, I like what you were suggesting, that when the staff needs our input on policy, that they come to us. Because I think, and that is, that was my concern, is that by, by us directing staff to bring this forward, staff's really busy right now, in my perspective, working on what we direct, how they are so directed at the current time. And I don't wanna bog that down. I think Jose did a really good job of saying, timeout, I need your help, or I need your input. And I, I, I feel very confident that we will get that as well. Simultaneously, I would be willing to have these discussions on what is a definition of managed camp with the county and Sandia and professionals involved that know.
Okay.
That have worked in it. I would also love to see input, I've heard, I think Jessica told me, that Camp Hope is closing to the tune of.
Well, the one up in.
As, as Cruz's.
No, 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 the one up in Denver, no.
No, no.
Yeah, something in the northwest.
Northwest, that camp.
Well, I mean, I guess, yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, I'd love to just get some, like you were suggesting, information on something of what, you know, what's happened and where, where are we in the world of managed camping and how's it working? And what's it costing communities? Because obviously it's.
So I think we have consensus.
Yeah, I have one more thing.
Yeah, as long as we're on new business and not stating our positions, because we need to just determine if we're gonna have this conversation.
If this were a business world and the board has a priority, you would define what the board expects from the CEO or the president. And you say, this is what needs to happen with these parameters. And then there is a performance evaluation at the end of the year. All the topics of his performance are evaluated and hopefully he has a nice green check mark, like accomplished. This is what we fail to do as a council, as county commissioners. We don't give that clear direction and, and.
I think that there's a, some agreement here.
So it's a hopeless situation, in my opinion, where we, we can have these meetings, but if we just, anyway, that was a little bit my.
So I, so.
If I may just.
Yeah, and I wanna hear, hear Jose's.
I absolutely agree with you and that's what I'm asking for, is for us to do that, to give those parameters. Absolutely agree. But I also wanted to say that I think that one of the challenges for you and Jose being, and I mean, before having these conversations, is that you, as a member of the city council, don't have any direction from city council. And yet you're in these meetings every single week trying to figure out where we're going. And I don't think that's fair to you as a mayor and I don't think it's fair to Jose as a city manager.
So I have heard that we have support for some kind of structured conversation about high level things that we, what the managed camp looks like. Is it, you know, what's the scope, what are the parameters around that?
With the county.
With the county. I also think though, but I would like to pose one more question. I would like, you know, we, I firmly believe we're partners with the county. But I, I wonder if there's merit in the council coming with a unified position and then coming in with the county. They already seem to have a, their position. So I guess, not that we might not be in a complete alignment. But I, I think as a council, we have to sort out what it is we want and then we bring it.
It's really tough in those meetings, anywhere with the county. And each one of us or two of us have a vision and we're trying to talk to the county commissioners about it, but we're not even aligned on what that vision looks like. I think that's gotta be really hard for them.
So is there support for us to have a discussion structured about the parameters of the managed camp? Whether or not it's one camp, will it be a managed, we'll get into it, but I think there's support for that. And I also recognize that we would, we can't, we need to bring in the county.
Mayor, I think that's the exact question that I just asked, is there's, about this. So I, I think we're asking the same question again.
You asked to move it, not have it in October.
But then I, I changed it saying I support it. That's why I wanted to speak up again, saying, I, I, I hear what they're saying and I appreciate it. And I felt like the city manager does a good job pulling us in when needed, but so you're asking a question again.
My question is, do we come together as a group so we have a unified position?
It's kind of what I asked, but we can ask it again. Do you wanna come together and have a unified? I mean, let's, let's see, again, let's ask again if you want. I'm okay with that. I'm just also looking at the time.
I know, I know, I know. I'm the same, I have the same stance, like I, I want information and I want Jose to come forward if he needs council direction.
Can we define if it's city or city and county? To make the question very clear, so we can say yes, no, or yes to both or no to both.
I think that's what Melissa just, let, let's see, the question is, are we willing to come as a council together to find, to get a unified definition of what we're working on? And then take that to the, the county as we work together to solve, to address this issue? That's the question.
I like that order.
Okay.
Of this.
Now we have two.
So we eat, we, we need, you wanna meet as council.
As a council, for example.
Which is what we're, so do you wanna meet as a council first and then go to the county and talk about what the definition of a managed camp is and other things possibly? Well, that's, that's the issue. I think it needs to be a highly structured conversation.
So I'm struggling with that because we, we can define something, but if they don't see it the same way, we're back at square one to spend a council meeting discussion.
I don't know that we're back at square one. I think that.
We need to come together with the county and say, this is what we need. Even if they, the three of them line up, maybe they have three times the same, same opinion, that's, that's fine.
But we, as a, but Olivier, in any conversation, I am watching the time, in any conversation, we, I don't think it's easy. If we five aren't, haven't hashed out some of the critical issues, then we're hashing it out at a table with other commissioners and they're gonna say, why haven't you guys figured out what issue you want?
The problem I see is that if we say we want a property in the county, they have already said they will not have a camp, a managed camp in the county. So.
They said a low barrier, a, a, a low barrier like another purple list. They did not say a managed camp in the county, it's a low barrier.
I, I thought it was managed, but.
No, unmanaged camp.
Unmanaged is what they said they want. They will not do that again.
And that makes sense. So if we, if we define it ourselves without the county and they have different opinion of the definitions, then where do we go?
Then we work together and that's the whole thing.
This is where we.
But we can't work, so if we have five independent.
Okay, my, my answer to your question is, I would like to have a meeting with the county.
Okay, so we have two support for, clearly, for working with the county, the city first and then going to the county. I need clarity from Jessica and Melissa and then we can move on.
I know, I, I don't know what else to say.
I know.
I, like, I feel like I'm very clear about this and I haven't really wavered.
All right, so.
For like two weeks of just meeting with the, on a city council meeting beforehand. Yeah, I know, okay.
And I'm, I'm very concerned about just us sitting around a table like we are right now, talking about what we each think it should be at this time. I just don't think that we, I think when the time is right in the future, I would support a structured conversation with professionals and staff and, you know, at least with professionals and our staff, making a recommendation to us, actually, after looking at what has other communities have done. I don't think it's gonna be, it's a good use of our time to go around and around and around saying, I want high barrier, low barrier. I want this, I want that. I, I think it's, it's non-productive.
Okay, so no.
Is that us as a council or us as a community or us as city and county?
I would do, I would have a conversation with, in the future, with, I would do, I would actually have a conversation with city council before the county, with an expert and staff recommendation.
There's consensus right there.
But, 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 but this is not in October. This is at a later date when, you know, we have made, this is where I was initially, where we have made progress on. I, I wanna step back and give staff some breathing room to focus on the issues at hand. And one of them is significantly large and it always has been in homelessness since I've been on council, which is where, the location where. And I'd like them to be able to focus on that and give them space to focus on that. And then at a later time, I would like staff to come to us saying, we're ready to come to you. We need, we, we'd like to make a recommendation on, on a location and.
Okay, so we have consensus and we'll work on the timing. Jose, to your, to the question I raised to you, do you feel you have sufficient guidance going into this budget process for how much to start allocating toward this topic?
No, I haven't had any guidance on allocating anything in the budget for this from council. So there, there's nothing in the budget that's proposed on homelessness and, or unhoused. And usually that has come from the joint sales tax, which the county is the one who, who controls that portion of it. Obviously, we both contribute into it. So in this 2023 budget, there's no money allocated for a unhoused camp.
But we've never had any money in our budget allocated towards any, towards homelessness, correct?
I don't believe so. I think it's all. I don't believe so, I think it's all from the joint sales tax.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
What that does say is, if a agreed-upon solution does happen in January, February, March, April, we're always available to do an amendment of the budget to make that happen, if that's something that we see.
Do you feel as though you need guidance on the level of financial support that council might be thinking about going for it? And then I'm going to close this down, but I'm just trying, I want to make certain that you are getting what you need. So if you, to Melissa's point, I'm assuming you're going to ask us if you feel that you don't have what you need.
I'm working off the council direction on a possible temporary managed camp site and a permanent managed camp site. Uh, and kind of working through that, and what that process is, we have our cross-functional team that is out and trying to get best practices, talking with state folks for Denver. I think you're going to have an update that I've given out, an email that just came out this afternoon. It's going to provide things that are being done that maybe aren't structured. I think that's the biggest thing that we're finding out, is that we think that a lot of the things that have been successful that they're coming from are way more structured than we thought that they needed to be, but these aren't structures, what needs. So, but we're continuously learning and being referred to other people within the state that have done things, so we're, we're still learning ourselves.
Okay, on that note, I think, so where we have it is, we have support for a conversation, just not immediately. A conversation guided by a facilitator. Thank you. All right, is there any other new business? Great, thank you. Let's go with family medical leave, is that next?
Aaron. Diversity, equity, inclusion.
Oh, I'm on the wrong pa, I'm on the wrong page, excuse me.
Oh, numbers.
Sorry, I'm on the wrong guiding, that's two weeks from now. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. And thank you for sending the materials in advance, that's very helpful to have the full presentation in advance.
Absolutely, so Mayor and Council wanted to have Aaron do a presentation to the council, just talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, progress that we've made within the organization, and some of the new initiatives that we've undertaken. So I will hand it to Aaron.
And Tom, we're having a team effort here.
Just pretend you're not here.
Families at T-Surfer next time. Um, thank you for your time this afternoon to provide an update on our internal organizational DEI efforts, specifically over the last 12 months. Um, and I am going to use my notes a little bit more than I usually do, just so I can take those a little bit more efficiently for everything else you have on the agenda. Uh, before we start highlighting the items here that we want to present, um, I think it's important that we start with, you know, where we really started. So although today the items we're going to highlight are over the activities and efforts that we have spent to focus on the last 12 months, before that, uh, we, we really, we recognize we had a somewhat segmented uh, delivery of DEI-related content across the organization. And while, well-intentioned, um, it was lacking a bit of clarity of what we were trying to do, and what we were trying to accomplish, and how we were going. So about a year ago, um, and really before that, we recognized we would benefit from an experienced partner in the space to help facilitate us through our, our journey. So about a year ago, we partnered with CPS HR Consulting, and specifically a DEI group that's part of CPS HR Consulting. Uh, CPS HR is a nationwide HR-focused organization that specializes in public sector organizations. Uh, and the DEI group that we're partnering with currently has three different municipalities that um, they're working with as clients in this work. And our project leads have extensive DEI training and learning experience, and so we really benefited from that. So in addition to those qualifications and experience, you know, we really selected CPS HR as a partner to assist us with facilitating this journey for the internal part of the organization, because we found that their model of meeting us where we're at um, together as we move forward would be more effective for, to see improvement for the organization from an aspect of DEI versus launching into a higher level, more advanced conversation around diversity and inclusion. Uh, while we knew we wanted the learning component in this work, uh, we initially asked for the following key items. So an initial assessment of our efforts, our, our efforts, sorry, and to facilitate employee feedback, um, ELT, or executive learning ship, learning team learning and alignment. And then finally, the creation of a DEI roadmap that outlines and focuses us on both short, mid, and long-term initiatives. Um, so with that, that was really our initial work that we started with them about a year ago. Um, last December, we hosted our first set of employee focus groups. We had approximately 25% of our workforce participate and provide feedback, which we are very pleased with. Um, that, those conversations really complemented the initial results we had from our GEAR survey. That was, um, distributed back in the spring of 2021. So while the survey gave us breadth of information, those conversations really gave us depth to that, to that feedback around diversity, equity, and inclusion. There were several key themes we heard out of these focus groups, and I think these are important. So the groups felt the initial feedback was that DEI was emphasized, but lacked clarity of how and what this looked like throughout the organization, openness to change, a strong sense of community engagement, uh, recognition and commitment to be among the diversity, and finally, a desired contributor. So with that, um, we used both the feedback in the organizational conversations to guide us in building out a DEI roadmap. Uh, we really wanted to create a clearly communicated action plan and paths to define how we are going to work towards DEI. So you can see here on the left-hand side are the key themes that we were addressing within our roadmap. Um, and they range from communication of DEI vision and efforts, the visibility of our efforts, DEI education, community engagement, and the recruitment of our candidate pools, and how do we diversify recruitment of folks. And then each, along with the themes, are specific recommendations or action items associated with supporting those themes, for how we can improve in those areas. On to, to the right side, what you can see. Well, I made it all bigger, I didn't need to do that, sorry. Um, on the right-hand side here is really, this is our roadmap or our pathway to improvement. And it was really critical, I felt, um, that we identified short-term, midterm, and long-term and future goals, acknowledging that we're working towards DEI. Um, you can see the short term, so these are going to be initiatives that we focus on within the first six months. You can see here that we highlight and emphasize the communication and really the alignment, the why we're focusing on our DEI, um, work, um, and then launching into DEI education and learning opportunities. Midterm for our six months to two-year timeframe was continuing the DEI education, um, community engagement, enhancing the activities we already do through community engagement, and then start focusing on the systems, particularly around the recruitment of our candidates to ensure that we can attract a more diverse pool of candidates. And long-term would be the continuation and the visibility of our DEI efforts, along with checking and assessing efforts along the way. So this has been a really critical anchor to the work that we're doing, because it defines a key path for us to follow as we do this work internally. Um, so you saw part of the short-term initiatives, um, identified was some clear communication from the executive leadership team, and really an understanding throughout the organization of why this work was important, really, and how it's a business justification, and how it's foundational to what we do, and why we should prioritize the time that we're, we're putting into not only the learning and the engagement around the topic. Um, so we spent significant time at the executive leadership team level, discussing and really coming to an alignment of why the DEI work is important to us. As you can see here, um, we highlighted what we, why we believe in the work, what we think it achieves, and what it promotes on behalf of the city. And we communicated this out to our, the organization. And that was a key step in one of the themes that was addressed as a feedback of our request for them to understand what we're going to do and why we're doing it, how it's going to. Uh, we also, just to add a note here, foundationally, from a timeline perspective, we felt like it was really important, not only before we could have those alignment conversations, but also to have key foundational learning opportunities around DEI, what it is and what it's not at the executive leadership team level, before we launch into the greater representation. With that, um, you know, it was very clear that we, there was an appetite across the organization for DEI learning opportunities. And, um, the approach we took in partnership and guidance with CPS HR was one of, through a lens of engagement. So how do we best engage all the members of our, our community and our organization, recognizing that we're all very, very different? And so our series is focused around, um, although topics, but it's really through an engagement lens. So in August of 2022, um, we had our first set of series, these are virtual, we focus on cultural intelligence. In October next week, we have the power of language. In December, um, our topic will be gender identity of expression. And in February of 2023, we'll have session on implicit and unconscious bias. And then separately, we'll also be having, um, DEI for supervisors or supervisors 2.0 for, for all of our supervisors that will be held on-site. So really excited about that. Um, you know, the first session, although next week is our second, uh, session of this series, uh, the first session in August, we had about a third of our workforce participate, which was significantly higher than some of our previous offerings of lunch and learns and DEI learning topics. So we were pleased with that, and we intend to increase that participation each session. And those are available, um, for all of our staff, full and part-time, and help to participate in engagement.
So if you didn't have a chance to participate in a certain module, where would I find it, for example, to listen to it?
Yeah, so, um, thank you for bringing that up. Um, we, for intern, for our employee staff, we did record at least one session, and then we have it posted on our intro web. Um, for anybody else, I can email that out, we provide a link, so you can watch that and get up to speed. And they are pretty, they are pretty interactive, they are virtual, but they do a good job of ensuring that, um, it's engaging in departments, I will say, one of the topics we've been talking about is, um, how do we eliminate any obstacles for our folks to participate? Whether that's, you know, kind of creative scheduling, watch parties, making sure people have the equipment to be able to participate. Um, so everybody's been really engaged in ensuring that we remove any obstacles that might be in the way for folks to participate. Before I go into performance metrics, the other item on there, um, in the spring, we launched a series of options for folks across the organization to participate in cross-functional teams. And cross-functional teams are essentially exactly what they sound like. It's an opportunity for folks from multiple departments, across departments, to focus, we're going to team together collaboratively, focus on a specific initiative or project. Um, and we did launch a DEI engagement cross-functional team, which we have great participation on. And really, that task force has been identified to not only champion our efforts across the organization, but also ensure that activities, the conversations, um, that we are hosting support the roadmap. And really, we're continuing activities that, that follow that we're, um, keeping on track. So that has been great, and I am the liaison to that internal CFT, which I enjoy a lot. Uh, separately, so, um, these performance metrics that I have highlighted here were all part of metrics that were included in the strategic plan process back in the spring as a way to identify, measure our movement and improvement in certain areas as we are moving towards reaching our strategic plan goals. Um, and so because DEI is a citywide initiative that is not only owned by one department, like for example, for HR, um, we've highlighted, and I just pulled these out of, um, what will be reported also in the 2023 budget book, but are really our updates on some DEI performance metrics. Um, and a lot of these metrics are used in other like communities that are measuring similar things. And that's really important to ensure we're comparing ourselves to other high-performing organizations.
Aaron, I have a question about these, they look like, to me, like they're quarterly? Is that what, is that what the?
That is quarterly, yep.
So is that quarterly, um, in that, so is that like year-to-date quarterly? So as a total, it's like that, or just in that quarter?
Point in time.
So it, so it's a point in time situation, okay.
Both of them.
So.
Funny.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so the first one there is minority management professional positions. So it's not just enough to say we have an organization that matches the composition of our community if it doesn't reflect that in our leadership positions and our professional positions. That's why that one is addressed. That target there is set at, um, reflecting the composition of the community. Uh, males and females in management professional positions, very similar metric.
So in our, what would the impact be, for example, on one person in these management positions changing from, uh, whether it be male, female, or minorities to non-minorities? Would that be like, if one person changed out, would that have a significant impact on this?
Um, I would say, what is, the total count of, it depends, I, I, I don't want to speak of what the total count of our professional positions and our total count of all management, our all positions. That's really one out of probably eighty?
But I, but what is?
So you're right, if one was some changes, one out of eighty is not going to move, it's not going to move it significantly.
Right, so, so it, so, but what is significant? Like, I don't know what percentage becomes significant of a change, or what number, so, like, what would we have to do to bring that up to green? Do we need a shift in four positions, or do we need a shift in twenty positions? Like, what's the magnitude?
That's a good question.
And so that, for me, that's the kind of information I personally want to know, is it's great to know where we are, but, I mean, if you look at the huge, I mean, this is from the chart, it looks like huge changes, right?
Right.
I don't know if they really are, and I don't know what the, you know, like, is that a failure of our policy? Or was it just that someone's brother-in-law decided that they were moving to Kansas, and so they moved too? You know what I mean? I, I don't, this doesn't, it doesn't tell me anything about how we're doing, or, and the way we're actually managing.
Yeah, and we can reflect that to represent that count, or, and make that happen.
Well, I, it would also, like, be nice to, like, what's the impact of that? What's that, what is happening with that? Just statistics sometimes don't, like, don't tell you what's really happening. So I'd like also maybe a little bit more, like, education about.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let's see here, investment in DEI development is one of our performance metrics. Just a note here, although the target says $12,000 for, um, 2022, really. We have, we just haven't paid yet, so that, that one has been spent. Language incentive was an initiative we launched back in the spring to, um, not only reward our employees who can speak a second language and assist our customers in a variety of ways, but it was a way to really recognize, um, that we have folks in the community that speak a different language, need assistance in a different language, and there's ways that we could do so by leveraging the, the talents and of our internal staff. Um, and then bid receive for competitive solicitation by minority women-owned businesses, enterprises. And then percentage of disadvantaged business enterprises included municipal construction projects. So that's on the, you know, the, the business bidding and awarding of projects to a more diverse group and to, to, to track that. The final thing I want to highlight here is, um, so as part of our initial assessment, we really completed an inventory of all the things we were already doing internally that we've recognized, maybe we're already doing them, but we don't necessarily label them as supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts throughout the city and throughout the community. And so as part of, um, the budget process this year for 2023, as we moved to budgeting for outcomes, and in tying, uh, our budgeting to strategic plan goals, we had the opportunity for each department to go through their budgets and label their different expenses to supporting DEI. And so what this represents here is, you can see, we have approximately $1.43 million that has been labeled and really support our DEI initiatives, and, um, to enhance diversity and inclusion of more people in our programs and our services. The, what was really a great exercise was, and those range anywhere from language-like assistance to expanding burn ramps to in-person recreation. Um, what we did in our DEI CFT about two months ago is we asked for that list to be produced out of budget. And we went through as a CFT, and the group went through and really kind of had some really great questions with departmental leaders as to, hey, why is this line item identified as supporting diversity and inclusion? Like, what actually is it achieving? And so we collected all of that. And so we collected all of that feedback from this CFT. And then as part of the final budget review process with the city manager, we reviewed all those questions with the departmental leaders. So then we had like a really great in-depth conversation to ensure that what we're recording relates to these initiatives. With that, that's all I really have.
Questions, comments?
I can start if, yeah. Thank you for that presentation. I think DEI is very important. The, the presentation is a lot about measuring and top-down aspects within, within the city of Durango organization, metrics, training learning. And I was wondering if we can include more information from the bottom up and related to our community, so not only the city of the Durango organization, the structure, employees and leaders, but from what are we doing on DEI for our community? And I think a good source would be the CRC, which represents a large group of people as well as direct clients. What topics they have brought forward, what have we done to make sure that those are addressed? And what can we do, what we're still doing, what is coming up? So one part, what most of it is focused on is internal city operations management HR. But I would like to see it as well, community-wide, what do we do for our community?
Is that currently in the strategic plan or is it more of a, it's more of an internal goals and the work plan?
When, which one in our operating?
DEI is more in, right now in an operating, it's more an internal.
How the initiatives are aligned in the operating plan are primarily internal at this point in time. There is one item that is to improve and enhance the engagement throughout the community.
Yeah, line I'm seven and eight. But I, I wonder why it's not community, community issue? Or is that a separate topic that we should, because in a way, the community is our client.
Sure, I think that they're intertwined. When you look at it, first and foremost, there's a, there's an internal portion of getting our employees the, the training and the necessary awareness that they need. And so I think we have to kind of begin to fix, not fix, so after we're looking, but we need to begin to address that within the organization before we can go out into the community and be prepared to kind of open it up. But I do know that we do have different things that we offer when we look at DEI and some of the services that we provide out to the community. This one, and this part of this focus of it really is internally, how are we bringing our staff along? So that they understand and that they are, they're inclusive, they're included and they get the buy-in and necessary training so that they can be, everybody at the staff level can be active into the participation. So when I look at a lot of the employee engagement series that we do, especially even with the cross-functional team, that is absolutely bottom up. Those, that cross-functional team is made up of, made up of employees that are throughout our organization, throughout different departments, throughout different levels of the organization. So it's a very much bottom-up approach and they're the ones that are asking those questions that we have to ask the directors of, you're crediting this to DEI, why are you doing so?
No, I, I meant the separation between clients, our community versus the top, the organization. So is, how, how can we improve the DEI in our community? When we had the last CRC meeting, we were looking at who's, what department, faultless, DEI fault, and it falls under HR. But it's because DEI, the way we define it in the city, is a HR issue for internal staff or the organization structure. And I think we need to bring this to higher.
I think, I think, I think one of the challenges there is that as an organization, it may not be our responsibility to change the community and to educate the community. We can lead leaders and we can act by example. But I think that the way that we're going to be most effective in the community is by leading by example and by partnering with other partners in the community like 9R, like FLC, like the Chamber, and work with them to create a community-wide DEI outlet. That's, I believe that's how we're going to be most effective, working with our partners. I think as an organization, what we can be most effective with is affecting our organization and being leaders in the community and that.
May I just respond to that?
May I keep, also keep us, we are behind moving on, and I have to say two things. We are having a meeting at our next study session to talk about advisory boards and I think that that'll be coming up. And I also want to say that this is not the forum to discuss our strategic plan. We do that. So if it, I think to the point, Council Rosman raised a question, but what we're hearing right now is your internal, to the extent that council will provide direction for community issues that would come through a strategic plan discussion of the goals.
I, I wanted to just give a, one last, I'll make it very short. Topic is diversity, equity, and inclusion updates. So that is the topic. And where I feel that we are not thinking big enough is, let's take the gender-neutral toilets or the sidewalk that is not accessible for people with disabilities. These are not resource, or these are just DEI issues that we need to address and we need to have the organization structure for, and the finances and the feedback from however it comes in, from community through the advisory board. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I think there's definitely room for improvement.
Did you do the gender-neutral pressure?
I know, I.
Oh, I just, I didn't know if that was a topic.
No, 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 this is an example of things that took place and are taking place.
Sure.
And how we as a, as the city of Durango and the council, improve our performance on DEI for our community. You addressed a very powerful, which is organizationally and setting the example and leading by example. That's all I want to put.
I can highlight, in, if you like, the initiatives. We have a full list of all different initiatives, including like the gender neutral and the gender neutral backgrounds and changing that. The providing feminine hygiene products and like all diversity facilities, we have a, that, that's inclusive in that list. I did highlight it today. I can highlight that though as part of the budget process that is in the packet and it's going to be included. To your point, your point is very well taken of what the presentation today seems very internal-focused. That is because that's where we're at in our roadmap.
Right.
And in our mid, in our medium term, in our initiative, what seven and not, or in eight, our focus on community engagement, both on establishing points of contact with different community groups, some initial outreach, and establishing methods of two-way communication so we can best inform our community, the efforts that while we are doing, and solicit feedback on which we can best serve the community. So I, so I would agree, that's, that's where we're at, that is where we're at.
And I would add even through the past three years, things like making certain grade when we deal with endless river trail that people in a wheelchair can get up those, I mean, we've been addressing that. So I'd like to thank you. I also want to say that I did attend one of those sessions with the consultants in this very informative. So I encourage council to do that. Erin, thank you. Thank you for the progress that the cross-functional team is making. Rachel, you're next. Thank you. Tori, are you coming up as well? Okay, because there's room at the table if you needed as a board member to attend. And Rachel, we have you slotted for 10 minutes, just so we're.
Yeah.
Sure, thanks. Sorry, oh, sorry. Are these posters to put up in businesses?
Yeah, more to keep and celebrate Spoktober in your own way.
It's really cool.
Thank you.
Hours, very excited.
Yeah, should be.
When you're done, I do want to make one comment about it.
He was helping last night.
I know. Great.
Okay, so I'll hopefully take about 10 minutes for our Q2 update. Oh, sure, go ahead. So any questions? Yes, I know. So you should have all received the full presentation and report from Tom earlier. This is my kind of abbreviated condensed version so that we can keep things moving along.
Do you want to have a full screen on that?
And maybe minimize the.
Thank you. So to start off, there's a lot of data contained in this report and presentation. So I thought a good way to start was sharing all our different data providers and partners with you. So some of the major ones are Datafy, STR, AirDNA, Tourism Sentiment Index, the airport, and the list goes on. I'll start with some destination management highlights. The La Plata County Lodging Overview, there are a total of 61 hotel properties within the county, including the city, almost 2,500 hotel rooms and almost 1,500 short-term rentals in the county. The occupancy rate for Q2 was 67.2% for hotels and 50% for short-term rentals. And an exciting point I wanted to share with you all is that in August year-to-date, so not just for Q2, but for the full year through August, Durango had the third highest occupancy of all destinations in the state at 71.1%.
Would you go back to that first slide for just a quick second? Because so 61 properties.
Oh, sorry.
Well, you, maybe you could just share this with us after the meeting and then we won't have to be writing and. I know, but I just, so 61 properties, 2,500 hotel rooms, totally, that's city and county?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. And then 1,500 is short, okay. And the city, short-term rental, city and county as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is a slide from the Colorado Tourism Office that I wanted to share and it shows change in visitor spending by county. On the left is a map of the change from 2019 to 2020, so kind of peak pandemic there. And then the right is 2019 to 2021. So you can see on the left that we are the winners with the highest change in visitor spending. And then on the right, we're still within the top five counties. So I bring this up for a couple of reasons. We can congratulate ourselves, pat ourselves on the back, but also as a cautionary point that, you know, the attributes of La Plata County and Durango that have served us so well through the pandemic will begin to subside as reasons to travel to the region in this new post-pandemic world. So marketing is going to continue to be very important as we go into this next phase. Some exciting trip data to share. 58% of our visitation is from visitors who are staying five days or longer. I know this is a surprising one for most people and because one of our main goals is extending length of stay for a number of reasons, economic, sustainability, we're very excited that this metric is so high. Some partnerships and community relations highlights. As you all know, Waylon Ryan on our team has undertaken an ambitious stakeholder workgroup workshop program. He's had over 10 workshops with various sectors of the community. And you can see the attendees of those workshops up here, or the majority of them at least. And we're getting ready to go into our phase of moving on to the residents now. So we'll be having these workshops for residents in the county now as well. Just a reminder, our community engagement platform is at engage.durango.org. We encourage all residents to sign up for this, but particularly, you know, if you have not signed up yet, I would encourage you to. It allows you to see progress on different projects that we're working on as well as contribute to surveys and give feedback to us. Some other partnerships updates. We had a successful opioid overdose awareness and Narcan training this quarter that was very well attended by members of the frontline hospitality community and was so successful that we plan on doing more of those throughout the year, maybe a couple a year or perhaps quarterly. We worked with our accessibility working group in the Southwest Center for Independence to release a survey about accessibility in the region. And this also led to some exciting updates on our website, which are now live. We all know that ADA is really just scratching the surface of accessibility for our locals and our visitors. So we now have a number of different categories that businesses can go into their login on our website and tell us all about what accessibility offerings have for people at their businesses. A quick marketing recap, some of our KPIs, impressions, engagements, and a great conversion rate of 6.5%. For Q2, because that is leading into our peak season, we really focus on our Care for Durango educational campaign and our sweepstakes. We're not so aggressively trying to get visitation drummed up at that time because we're going into peak season. And some of the samples from our Care for Durango campaign, hopefully saw them up throughout town, banners, flyers, and online. And our organic marketing and social media strategy, supporting our partners by sharing their stories through the lens of our guests. We've also been very successful with our sweepstakes. This is an example of a sustainable vacation sweepstakes that by the end of it had over 100,000 entries. Also wanted to make sure you all are aware that all businesses and organizations in the community are eligible to schedule a free marketing consultation with our team. Our team meets with them for an hour or more, talks through all the different tactics and strategies that they're using to make sure that they can most effectively use their marketing budget. Some examples of PR coverage from Q2, Outside Magazine, Matador Network, Travel and Leisure, Hemispheres, Afar, and USA Today. Some sales highlights, we had a total of 86 trade show appointments. The bulk of those were at IPW in Orlando where we collaborated on a booth with the train and the ends of the San Juan Skyway to save some funds there. And I know you're all probably eager to hear about the local event marketing program, so I have a quick recap on that. For the grant program specifically, we have awarded event marketing grants to a total of 35 events so far for a total of $113,000 in grants. And these are a majority of the recipients, either the event or the nonprofit behind the event that have received those funds. And these are just some pictures where we've really ramped up our participation in local events, tapling and just support of local events as well. So connecting with the community, listening to locals while enhancing, promoting, and documenting local events. And these are some highlights of our participation in Durango Pride. We had a float in the parade and we were also a major sponsor through the event marketing grant. And this is part of their thank you letter to us. Pride 2022 was our most successful year yet and the first year that we were able to offer a parade and add more family-friendly events. This grant helped us to provide a safe space for the LGBTQ plus community to gather and celebrate one another. Thank you to Visit Durango and the city of Durango again for your support of Durango Pride and our community. And as part of that local event marketing funding that we receive, we will be creating several overarching event campaigns each year. Visit Durango with our marketing committee comes up with the theme of the event. Then we create the marketing, graphics, PR, organized logistics, and work with local partners to inspire each business or organization to take their own spin on the event. So businesses can do a one-night event, a charity drive, a special deal or discount, a curated exhibit, and so on. Our goal is that as these events continue on an annual basis, they will eventually become like a snowdown. Events that locals love, take place at off-peak times of the year, are multi-generational and help improve quality of life. Next year, we'd like to do a restaurant week and possibly an art month. For December, we are working on a month-long holiday town concept. And our first of those campaigns is Spoktober, a month-long multi-generational celebration of all things. of all things cycling in Durango. So since it is October, I'd like to say Happy Spoktober. This is a slide that shows some of the highlights of the marketing and graphics and advertising for this month-long event campaign, and you all have those posters now there with you as well. Our team did an amazing job of working with the local community partners to brainstorm and come up with a lot of fabulous events. So Spoktober for this year has 15 sub-events and promotions, including October 7th at Buckley Park, there will be a Share the Love Cycle event where you can recycle and upcycle old bikes and parts, and these upcycled bikes will be donated to the Navajo Nation. On October 9th, there will be a group ride from the Center for Southwest Studies at the fort to Buckley Park. The USA Cycling Collegiate Mountain Bike Championships will take place at Purr. From the 13th to the 6th, 7th is the Devo Kids Halloween Bike Parade. And every Wednesday this month, the Durango Hot Springs will be offering 50% off anyone who rides their bike to the hot springs for a recovery day. We also worked with local PR firm Verde to handle the PR for our first Spoktober, and they've gotten us some amazing coverage in outdoor publications, local print, and some news features on local networks as well. Our total budget for one of these event campaigns, like a Spoktober, is about $30,000. And just for Spoktober's budget, for example, about a third of that is paid marketing and advertising, one-third is for the PR contract, and one-third goes towards branding, printing, small program grants, sweepstakes and giveaways, and local event coordinators. And last night's kickoff at Mountain Bike Specialist was the Durango Cycling Legends Meet and Greet with Ned Oberg and Todd Wells and about 10 cycling legends. Our team did an amazing job with this kickoff, and it really exceeded my expectations. There were over 100 attendees, and I was happy to see that about a third of those attendees were kids. You can maybe see in the picture there on the right, the first several rows were kids that are sat on the ground, excited to meet their heroes and get autographs. So a truly multi-generational event with an amazing kickoff for Spoktober Month. Just a couple last updates, the Durango Welcome Center highlights. This is our amazing Welcome Center staff. As a reminder, these are the partners in the Durango Welcome Center. Some key metrics, total door count for Q2 was 46,972. If you're curious, they do track which types of questions and inquiries they get, and the most common ask at the Welcome Center is about local events. Some other accomplishments, we had our bump out with a public piano and a nice lounging space. We've also started selling in partnership with Bring It, Bring Your Own, utensils, mugs, and other items to help people be more sustainable. And some operations update, hopefully you're familiar with a lot of our board. Thank you to Tori, our board chair, for being here today. Our new board members are Lisa Schwantes from CDOT, she's sitting in the Transportation Sector seat, and Dr. Ashani Benerji from Fort Lewis College. We have two open seats on our board right now for Outdoor Recreation and Agro Tourism and Heritage. This is our fabulous management and marketing staff. I am very excited to report that we are fully staffed. We just last week learned that we got an award. This is Wayland accepting that award at a conference. The award was for the Top 100 Green Destination Story Competition. We've been featured on some podcasts. I was recently appointed as the Chair of the Colorado Tourism Office Tourism Marketing Committee, and Brooke Henderson from our team was recently appointed as Vice Chair for the Four Corners Alliance for Diversity. Some other highlights there. We've also been, had several speaking engagements, panels at conferences, and there seems to be a theme developing. All the panels we get asked to be part of are about sustainable tourism, so we're definitely making a name for ourselves when it comes to that category. And hopefully I didn't go over by too much, but that is the presentation. So if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel, and appreciate getting it in advance. I think everyone should recognize that council does usually read all of that in advance as well.
I just want to say, again, I continue to be impressed with the progress you're making, and I really appreciate that. And I want to say about things like Spoktober, don't give up. It might not get as popular as quickly as you want it to over time. Give it five years before you decide it works or doesn't work, because especially if you talk to people like the Iron Horse, you know?
Yeah.
It takes that. So I think it's a great idea, and just keep with it and keep working on it.
Snowdown didn't happen overnight.
Exactly.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Any other questions? Just because we are behind schedule, so I am.
No, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, you know, you have all of my contact info, and please reach out to your board liaisons. There's been an update, so Brian Landstrom is both Barbara and Melissa's liaison, and thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Cynthia?
Cynthia is going to be here to kick off the community support, recommended block grants discussion. I'm willing to step back over here because I know we have some members in the community that are going to present, so I want to make sure they have a.
So I do want to say we have reduced time, so I'm trying to figure out how we're going to do that. We're going to keep the conversations moving, recognizing that cap council has seen some, much of the material in advance.
I'm happy to go to 5 o'clock, so we get a full hour.
Okay.
If council feels that way.
There's support, okay.
We've got four presentations, so we just.
So presenters will also need to keep them, and we want to hear it, so we will go for one hour.
Sure, sure. So, good afternoon, mayor and councillors. I'm just introducing the various nonprofits that are here to present and make budget requests for the week budget. So the first up is Access Health, that's Molly Rodriguez. She's the Behavioral Health Director of Residential Crisis Services. And Seradale Loveworth, Senior Director of Strategy and Development.
Seradale, and folks come to the table, thank you.
I think we need one more chair, maybe?
Do you all have a startup presentation?
We don't.
Okay.
No. We are ear caught.
Yes. Pull up another chair, please.
Well, thank you so much for having us. We actually are going to wear a couple of different hats, and we'll wear all of our hats promptly. So I'm our Senior Director of Development with Access Health System, and wearing my development hat with you today around the ATU and the core program Detox, while we've been talking homelessness in the past couple of weeks, we're talking ATU today. And then, do you guys want to share?
So yeah, I'm a commander of duty with the Police Department, and we're just sharing some information with you guys about the core team, and the ask for access for the continuing contracts for that. And then Molly has some statistics to share with you guys as well.
And I'm Molly Rodriguez. I'm the Behavioral Health Director of Residential Crisis Services. And so I oversee everything, for the most part, that comes out of the crossroads location with Access Health System, including our co-responder programs. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, so I'll just start briefly, giving a little overview and a little information about the ATU. And we thought we would save the core team for the end because it's kind of the most fun to talk about. You know the ATU's fun, too. So, as, as most of you know, the acute treatment unit is the sole psychiatric, 24/7 psychiatric services location here in Durango, and was started as a partnership between municipalities and counties across our five-county region. So it's always been a shared initiative, it's a shared resource. The City of Durango has been a partner since the beginning, and we're here to request continued support of a renewed three-year MOU. We've been on a three-year MOU process with the city for quite some time, and requesting continued support at the same amount of $150,000 per year. And the ATU, about 50% of the folks we serve at the ATU are City of Durango residents over the years, and it fluctuates a little bit between about 48 and 52%. So a large portion of those we serve are City of Durango residents. And at the ATU, we provide full wraparound resources for psychiatric crisis. So a nurse, psychiatric providers, case managers, clinicians onsite, and really respond to the crisis needs of someone in our local community. And the benefit around that is, one of the biggest benefits around that is staying local when you're in that situation, and do so much for recovery. It can also save a lot of resources for that individual, their family, and our community at large. But most importantly, it's just staying close to your network of support, close to your family, close to your employment, makes a huge difference. And when all of these partners got together to start the ATU at that time in 2006, people still had to be, any psychiatric crisis had to be transported out of area with the many associated impacts of that. So, so that's one of the elements that we're asking for your support with. And to give you perspective around that cost, the ATU is about a $1.5 million budget to operate. A night at the ATU is around $1,500 that cost. And City of Durango so far, up through June this year, was 357 nights of stay. So when you look at the cost of the contribution from the city compared to the cost of those services, it is a good investment, an investment that's shared across the community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Molly because she's got the inside perspective from running that out of state, so.
Yeah, I'm going to try to keep it brief. I know we're making up time all the way. But when I was originally asked to kind of prepare for this presentation and thinking about the work I've done, my history comes from working with inpatient neurodisorder units in Cleveland, Ohio, and so a higher-level psychiatric facility. And I've been working with Access Health for about 10 years in crisis services primarily, which includes the ATU. I started to look at data reports, census information per day, discharge summaries to learn more about the individuals who are accessing our care, and I was really quickly reminded that at the very base of the services that we are providing are the people. And so I think about what it's like to be on our unit, and I think about the responses that we get from patients. I walk through the unit multiple times at the beginning with our staff, for me, with the patients that are on the unit, and the energies are very often safe. It's a place where people describe as feeling finally safe. It's the young person who's on the unit after a suicide attempt who is no longer looking terrified. It's the laughter I hear in a group therapy session when people are finally around other people in a shared, safe environment that say, "Get me. Like, I'm not alone in this. We're all doing this together." I think about the colorful artwork that's displayed throughout the unit. I think about how it represents visually the pain and perseverance and processing that people experience in a very short amount of time. The ATU's a lower level of care. It's a shorter stay than some other facilities, and the change that can happen during that time is incredible. The ATU, in my opinion, is a vital part of the crisis continuum in services, specific to our community. It helps establish this place where the crisis finally slows, where the healing starts, where the treatment begins outside of those very high-energy emotional places. And so as I thought more about what I wanted to share with you, I wanted to tell you what we've heard from people, what we've heard from our patients. And so I went back to the data, and we do a patient satisfaction survey at every discharge. And some of the things that people use, some of the words that people use to describe their experience is that the staff there is very kind, that they helped them with a traumatic situation, that they were always there to answer questions and provide reassurance, it's quiet, comfortable, safe is a word that's often written in those, in those surveys, that they enjoy having this opportunity to slow down, to really be able to address what's going on for them. And helpfulness is a big piece of what we're getting reported back. When Seradale described the ATU as a wraparound service, it is in the sense that it provides care in the moment, care on the unit, but it doesn't end there. ATU services also include effective discharge and coordination of care with other providers in the community, being close and connected to resources, and our relationship with is vital and important. And I'm just really proud to share, so I'm going to in my brief amount of time. We recently started a project about two or three years ago where individuals who are at a higher risk, who come in with suicidal ideation or self-harming behaviors, receive a caring contact, and that's six months of ongoing contact, written mailings, as well as a phone call, that really just continues the extension of support that is shown to decrease crises in the future and increase likelihood that treatment will continue and not require another crisis to occur.
That's nice. And just to clarify, we thought we'd pause for questions around ATU before turning over to core, but I'll add before questions that the City of Durango also, of course, supports the Detox facility. And it can be confusing sometimes because it's the one building, but it's really two completely separate programs, although they work closely together if we have someone needing to go to one and then the other perhaps. But the reason we're not talking a whole lot about Detox is that that MOU is actually part of the Intergovernmental Agreement, the IGA, and that is coming up in 2024, January 2024 is when that gets reassessed. So we're happy to answer questions about the Detox, but ATU is really the one on the table for this.
Questions?
I'm just curious why you didn't ask for more money?
For more money?
With the cost of living having gone up and you've left it at the same rate it had been the previous three years.
Yeah, we've kept it consistent largely in consideration of the city's budget. But also, and just to clarify, we haven't approached the city for the smaller block grants either. And part of that consideration is also that the city has supported Core.
Yeah. And I'm assuming there's a, you might want more for Core.
Yeah, well, and the Core program has been, it's been something that we've been doing for so long, and thanks to the DPD and that amazing partnership, we're able to be involved in that, and thanks to the city, there's funding for it. So as a, as a way of doing that, we've kept the other things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great explanation, and appreciate your consideration of the question.
Absolutely.
Councillors, thank you for your time today. Just want to talk to you briefly about the core team and what it means to the Police Department, what it means to the citizens of Durango, and where we're at with it. So, as you all know, our coresponders, our police officers paired with mental health clinicians, they respond to that person in crisis right at the time of the crisis, right? So historically, that's followed by law enforcement as kind of get in there, try and take care of the situation, and then figure out where to put people into resources. A lot of times that involves criminal justice system versus actual help for folks and resources that they need to be plugged into. And so our partnership with Access has been one that has really transpired law enforcement actions and law enforcement commitment around trying to take care of people in crisis in their mental health capacity versus looking for a criminal justice solution to a problem that's occurring as a mental health problem, right? And so we're really on the forefront of law enforcement agencies across the nation. You know, we have others looking to our, our unit and our successes as an example of how to, how to put something together in our communities and make it work. And so, so far this year, we responded to about 750 incidents just since the beginning of the year, and that's 750 times we've touched lives. And that's seven hundred and fifty times we've touched lives in a positive way and reverted people away from maybe the criminal justice system more into help. And so we have a lot of different examples of how that's worked. But, you know, there are a lot of positive impacts that have happened, not only in the community, but also within the Police Department, right? So officers who really embrace this model, and they really lean on the Core team to come in and solve these issues that are bigger issues than they have capacity to solve in law enforcement capacity. So it's been hugely successful. Some of the examples that I have, we have a person in the community who is clearly a danger to community members. It's a problem at the Welcome Center, restraining order there, it's a problem in different places in town. And our Core team's been involved with that person since the very beginning. We're working through a process of extreme risk protection to make sure that this person doesn't purchase firearms and things like that. But that's one example of how this team is keeping the entire community safe from folks and putting people into the right places to get help. So Molly has some statistics on what we've done this year and what we've accomplished with the Core team. But it is a vital piece and tool for the Police Department and for Access to really get on the ground and be in those contacts right off the front and help to guide those things through the resources at the backend, so.
I had mentioned just briefly in our previous discussion, the Crisis Continuum and the creation of the Core team a year and a half ago was something we'd never had before in this community. And most communities throughout the United States had had nothing like this before. And that was the integration of law enforcement with behavioral health professionals to allow for a more tailored and specific response for behavioral health crises. And of course, those include things like diagnosable mental illness or substance use disorders, but they can also look like family conflict. It can also look like a really bad day for just about anyone. And so it's that ability to respond in a new and effective way that doesn't necessarily require a justice system response. When I think about the impacts of the program, I know in the past we've had individuals speak about one particular person, or I could give you way too many individual stories that none of you would go home by five o'clock and I would be on the bad list. So I'm not going to do that today. But I do want to share with you some, as I get the notes every day, I read the reports every day of all the contacts that our team has had in collaboration with one another, the progress that they've made on any given case. And so some of the things I talk about are going to be just a few examples of what the impact has been. And so like Commander Shup indicated, we've had over seven hundred and sixty-seven calls since January one. Of those calls, the vast majority of people accessing the resource are between the age of nineteen and seventy. Over seventy-five percent of the contacts were resolved in community, with others being resolved by utilization of community resources like Access Health Systems, Walk-in Centers, the Detox Facility, or the ATU. The legal holds, people wonder how many people are involuntarily in services as a result of this team are less than eighty percent. And those are only at the result of an imminent risk to community or to the individual. That includes both mental health holds and holds for protective custody related to substance use individuals who are requiring an intervention in order to maintain their safety. We've served individuals from nearly every demographic, children, adults, housed and unhoused, employed, unemployed, insured, underinsured, and uninsured. We've supported those experiencing suicidal thoughts. We've intervened on scenes where people who have attempted suicide, experiencing hopelessness, severe PTSD, anxiety, intoxication, addiction. We've encountered community members with severe and persistent mental illness and formed relationships with those individuals, which enhances their interactions with law enforcement and better connects them to community resources. We've assisted in navigating challenging systems, de-escalated conflict, problem-solving resource barriers, and connected to multiple community resources, including man and departmental services, CPS, inpatient and outpatient services, both for behavioral health and substance use. We've strengthened relationships with community partners through collaboration and provided training and de-escalation and education to community partners. We've assisted in referrals and coordinated care to community-based services. And we've collaborated with law enforcement agencies at all levels, local, state, and federal, people need it, to enhance services being provided to this person and gain information to better serve. Any questions? I would like to add that I think all of Council have heard the parent who came and spoke at City Council about the Core work with that person's child. And so I want to recognize that, yes, we do hear about that. We appreciate also receiving the letters. So thank you for your work in our community, keeping us safe and keeping others safe. Molly?
Oh, sorry. I heard of the IGA.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to thank you for watching. I think prevention and, you know, trying to prevent it and things not happening. Yes, no, it's really good. I wonder if you need more of those better things to be done or more things to be done. I would also like to hear about those opportunities from every field. But you ask us this.
I would say similar. Molly, thank you for your work. Both of these programs are, I think, what we need more of, you know, strengthening ground up. I think the words you said, training, de-escalation, education, like, those are the things that help make our community stronger and better. And I think a lot of the issues we've been talking about recently, we've been talking about resources on mental health, resources on addiction, resources on like, how do we strengthen those things that we've heard too in meetings with the county on homelessness? Same like, how do we strengthen that and provide more funding and find more funding? And so I think me as one counselor would support that definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question too, can I just, in the Core program, how many vans do we have now?
We just have the one vehicle.
In one vehicle?
Yes.
And is there, you know, that program is just so beneficial. And I'm just wondering about expansion opportunities and or projections into the future with staffing and.
Yeah, we would like to expand it and staff it. I think that you have to drive that by the numbers of incidents that we're handling though as well. So we have to, we have to use the data to kind of drive how much we need. And if we're at a tipping point where we don't have enough, I think we're pretty comfortable, right? Where we're at. The vehicle that we have, so the Core team splits both end of the week. So you got one officer and clinician working the front half, and then another officer and clinician working the second half. And that's worked out very well. And their hours are a little bit more into the nighttime hours so that they can accommodate those calls for service. Because we look at when those calls for service are coming in so that we can deploy them, right? And I think resource-wise, we're looking pretty good with it right now. And, you know, as the numbers increase and things increase load-wise, we'll have to reevaluate that.
Well, let's hope it goes down.
I'm just going to keep us moving along here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Cynthia, who's next?
Humane Society is up next.
Okay, so Chris, thank you. Coming up. We are behind, and so let me start by saying that all of Council should have read your materials. So and I appreciate the explanations you provided for the increase in costs. So I want to assure you that we do our homework coming into these meetings.
That's appreciated.
Yes.
I'm Chris Nelson, Director of Animal Services. Susan Riches is our Board President, and Travis Worrell, our Director of Animal Protection. First thing I'd like to ask is, it's not normal for Travis to be here because usually all of his funding comes from the police budget. So it was kind of at the last minute he was requested to be here. And I'm not quite sure because this is all about my budget.
We're not sure why, but.
At any rate, he's here in case you have questions for him.
Yeah, I didn't prepare anything.
Don't worry.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
He kind of sprung on us at the last minute. So we are asking for around a twenty thousand dollar increase. I can tell you that I did, I just ran the numbers this morning before coming. And year-to-date, through October fourth, we're about fifteen percent ahead of last year on intake. Adoptions are up about five percent compared to last year. But obviously, do the math there, that's not enough to keep up with what the intake is. Last year's numbers were ahead of the two thousand and twenty numbers. Two thousand and twenty was a good year for the shelter. It was a bad year for everyone else, but the shelter itself, we kind of went through a phenomenon that happened nationwide. Everybody was stuck at home, so everybody adopted. Also, a lot of animal, less animals came in because everybody was stuck at home. So their animals weren't included. That's not the case anymore. Intake, what is, and also that year, there was a, the state suspended all spay neuter services for several months with private veterinary clinics and a couple of months with the shelter. And that has really come back to bite us, unintended. The dogs and cats. But so that is kind of, that's one of the reasons that's impacting our higher intake now. And then less adopters from all those people who adopted in two thousand and twenty. Because we had a big surge in adoptions, that's going down. The number of adopters is not keeping up with the intake. We have been able to transfer a lot of animals to other shelters when that's been possible. But it's really, it's mostly the young animals that are really hurting us. We are, the biggest problem that I'm facing as a Director of our facility is keeping up with wages.
Our risk, yeah.
I can't compete anymore. And I heard you say to the Access folks, how come you didn't ask for more? I truly would have liked to. I guess I basically my ask on the history with the Council and our relationship. I've been there twenty years and we've always tried to just ask for small increments. Couple of times we took pay cuts, many times we were tough during the recession and stuff like that. I wish I had asked for more because even with the, what I've asked will not even give me a cost of living increase for half my staff. The, if you look around right now, restaurants, which that's my biggest market for competing with employees. And the vast majority of my staff are entry-level workers. Same as kind of like restaurants are in that category. And they're all charging, they're all paying eighteen dollars an hour, fifteen dollars an hour now. But we were paying two dollars an hour more than minimum wage. That was always the attraction. When you can go flip burgers at McDonald's or you can come here and pick up dog poo, we're going to pay you better. And now we can't do that anymore. And it's getting really, it's getting harder to keep a workforce with increased amount of animals. Getting people to come to work and work for what we're offering. It's just not, it's not going to be maintainable for a long period of time. And, you know, we are trying, we will help on our end to combat the intake by education and doing low-cost spay neuters. But we can't do them all. And if you try to go to a vet right now in town, get your animal fixed, if you're not running an established client, most of them are not taking new clients because they don't have enough staff to keep up with the work. And veterinarians at restaurants can pass on their added expenses to the consumer a little easier than the humane society can. When I raise my prices, adoptions go down, the rate of stay increases, and that costs us more money. What, you guys only pay us for the first three to five days depending on whether an animal has a collar or not or any sort of identification. So all that extra, you know, that's on us, and we're willing to do that. But we're not going to be able to keep taking in the number of animals we are with less staff and higher expenses on everything. I mean, we're getting hit right and left, so I would have liked to have asked for.
I think you've made a compelling, my own personal compelling case for support, both in the documentation and now. I will also say that there's nothing that prevents you during the course of the year to working with the city manager. It doesn't mean that any council will approve it. But we set a budget, but then we also make amendments throughout the course of the year. So I do want to recognize that you, again, you made a, you gave the numbers for us, and they're pretty clear.
I would also, I'm going to be sending all an invite for ribbon cutting for our renovation. We did have to spend about one point two million dollars this summer, starting, started last year, but to renovate the place. And just so you're aware, we didn't feel like we could continue to provide the service that we provide for the animals with the equipment we had. I mean, twenty years of use, it's twenty-five years of use. It had seen its, a lot of it had seen its.
And the roof was leaking.
Yes, yeah.
The roof was leaking.
But more importantly, the cages were.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. So it looks like you have a shortfall budgeted for this coming year.
We always do.
Yeah, where does that come from?
That comes from our first store. The difference always comes from the first store. And that's another thing is that revenues are down there. Revenues have been declining there for a few years, just changing. And Goodwill moved in, the online garage sale type stuff, all that has competed. But they've been able to maintain competitiveness. But they're getting into the same, to the same situation we are. And that's going to get less and less. And I'll tell you, we just had our board meeting last week, and the first store director's quote says a lot. She's having to raise her wages to compete with Subway and Steamwise. And you can't stay, we're not going to be able to stay in business selling two-dollar t-shirts and paying folks eighteen dollars an hour. Eventually, that will get, that amount of money coming from there is going to get less and less. And then our shortfall is going to get bigger and bigger to where the organization has to start eating to the fun.
So I just want to say too, I want to kind of talk about what we're really talking about here. We're talking about the animals. And so the longer the animals have to stay, the harder it is on them. And the more challenged it is to create a good life for them. And one of the reasons why I know this in all transparency is I just fostered a dog out of the humane society for five days because she'd been there too long and was starting to have behavioral problems, which she had none of when she was with me.
You took Puddin', right?
Yes, because she wasn't, and I haven't checked in to see how she's doing, but she was, she got out of that environment and she just was a much different dog then for a while. And I hoped that it helped when she came back. So I really see the impact of this, and that's what we're talking about, is how do we take care of the animals in the community also? And so I, I too would say.
They're homeless too.
Yes, exactly, exactly in their own way.
Unhoused.
Other questions?
If I could add one thing, one of the things too that we do, and I don't think a lot of people realize it, is that we do get some long-term animals, like the ones that just don't get adopted. But also, we do for the community at large, do courtesy hold. If somebody winds up in the hospital for us because of an accident in town, we will take their dogs in, particularly now with the cost of boarding for a short term. We recently had a dog that was actually with us for several weeks because the woman was trying to find a place where she could live that would take her dog. And she wound up going back where she came from, but she couldn't find.
And that was a great, that was a great situation. I think it kind of speaks to a lot of other problems in our county in that this was a lady who came here from another state to work at Mercy. That's the kind of.
She had a job.
She had a job, and she was working at Mercy while trying to find housing to keep her.
Very little tiny dog.
It wasn't like my brute was really huge. This was a tiny dog. While trying to find housing, she was paying hotels, and she couldn't do that forever. So then she had to go stay at the homeless shelter while she was, while we took care of her dog. She ended up moving back to Atlanta because, I don't know, the wages weren't high enough to compete with the housing market here, but this is.
So I'm going to keep this a bit on schedule. I mean, I appreciate that.
I don't want to talk anymore.
I just want any more questions of the team.
And I don't know why I do was.
I don't, I don't either. We don't, don't want that. Other questions?
I have a question. First of all, thanks for watching, which is definitely important. I also believe if you, you gave a very detailed breakdown of cost and structure. And I think that insight and transparency makes it easier for us to say, need more? Reach out to us during mid-year adjustments or for next year. I also, when I read this package, and just for staff, I think you were asking for one forty-four, I think. but in the agenda, it says one twenty-one. So the numbers need to be correct.
One twenty-one was last year.
One twenty-one is what we're getting now, one forty-four is what we're asking.
So this on the agenda, it says the one twenty-one. Taking into account for the budget numbers.
I believe, and I'm going to ask seven of the department, but I believe it's the higher amount that's included in the budget document.
No, in the one I see here.
I know, there was some miscommunication on the agenda document that we put together, but...
But we'll get it sorted. Get the yes from other comments. Thank you so much and thank you for taking care of the animals.
We're all here.
Up next is La Plata Youth Services.
Right. Thank you.
And do you all have a PowerPoint presentation?
We do, yeah. Jason, he's just using the restroom real quick. My name's Chris, I'm the diversion program manager, just started about two weeks ago. Jason's the executive director of La Plata Youth Services. He started this as well, so kind of changed our word for...
I think it was on the agenda.
It is on the agenda as far as I remember, but Jason will definitely give you more info on that.
So, so welcome. We are, as I said, a bit behind time, so we will, but again, like I always say, everybody's got to look at things beforehand, so you can give us the highlights rather than just reading through the whole slides.
Understood, yeah. Again, I'm going to speak more on the diversion program I just started. And so basically, just want to sell it to y'all. I mean, y'all have been supporting us for quite some time now too. But with this change, we're just, I think we're trying to just create an alternative for, you know, traditional corporal punishment for the youth of La Plata County. And so it does, it offers a lot more accountability measures than traditional corporal punishment. And that's the biggest selling point there is that with that, like a lot of the measures that we do, the diversion that we do, it's like apology letters, you know, projects, more time with their family. There's even like restorative justice circles and like actually like face to face with the heart victim. And that just offers a lot more accountability than just paying restitution and fine and sort of stuff here. So this is Jason.
Is it Mary? My apologies. Yes. Yeah, I'm the newer executive director of funding services. Chris Wong is the newer program manager over at PYS. Thank you for your time and expertise. You know, we've been in existence since nineteen ninety-four, started out predominantly as a diversion program, really highlighting the need to keep young people out of the school-based pipeline. What we do know, what research dictates, is that youth who enter into these institutions or systems have a difficult time exiting at any given time. More specifically around that is, you know, what we're finding, a lot of the youth that are referred to diversion have mental health substance use. You know, come from families that have adverse life experiences or trauma backgrounds. In addition, you know, a lot of these families are facing food and housing insecurity in addition to it. So a lot of times it's desperation that leads youth to commit, you know, petty or first time offenses around theft or substance use, which is a frequent referral topic for our students that we serve. And this year, we served, goodness me, during those sixty-four young individuals through diversion, ninety-six percent of those exited successfully, ninety-five did not leave the program. And that's not, you know, taking into consideration the whole of La Plata County because our scope is, you know, in its entirety, the county, but the county of the city. Our ask, and I don't think Chris probably mentioned this, is ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars, which is consistent with...
Sorry. You want to advance it?
I don't need, I'm just going to talk, tell a role. Ninety-one thousand five hundred, which is consistent with our previous ask, these first programs specifically. And what we're also finding is a lot of the youth that we serve are involved in other systems also. We had access here earlier, a lot of crossover between the La Plata Youth Services that does, as well as Durango Police Department too, is a strong partner of ours also. Sits on our board and works very closely with our diversion program. I think about half of those sixty-four referrals came from DPD or municipal courts. In addition, oh, you know, looking at, especially first time offenders, we know substance use is prevalent right now in this town. Sadly enough, harder drugs are coming in. And there's, I would say a crisis around mental health with youth in particular. But the prevalence of cocaine and other drugs right now that are laced with very deadly chemicals is what I would call banned. It's, there's a nice little underbelly in this town that really impacts youth and families in a very sad way, I'll say. And we see this firsthand all the time. Oftentimes it's a level of disassociation. They're looking to escape from the family circumstances that they have, looking to, you know, at times with a petty theft, put food on the fam, excuse me. I mean, there's some, you know, strong correlation between folks that are in diversion and those that have these adverse life experiences. So in saying all that, you know, in addition, what we're finding again is, you know, the intersectionality of, you know, these demographics, we're looking at lower socioeconomic families, looking at these adverse or traumatic backgrounds. But how, even in our own programming, how the diversion program can refer to mental health experts to get therapy for families who don't have that access to opportunities or resources. They get involved in pro-social, community-based activities, building connections with the community and supportive adults, which we know through research, the positive development modality, that connection to a supportive adult figure as well as to the community as a whole is a huge indicator of success for young people. And so with the help of diversion and the youth advocates that really support the key management of these young individuals, we've had a lot of success for a lot of years. And the last thing I want to say really is that we had a school-based restorative practices program for about five to six years and now recently ended for a myriad of reasons. But what we're anticipating is that we're going to see a lot more referrals from the school districts, specifically nine R, from the security resource officers, SOBs, as well as identified DVD representatives who are on or are simply campus. And so this problem's not going to go away, unfortunately, at any point in time right now. The mental health, substance abuse and the desperation that is emanating from certain families right now is a critical juncture. So we appreciate your continued support and the opportunity to come next week.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I think what you are doing is one of the more important things. It's not necessarily cost, it's more of an investment, but you're betting even more costs down the line. So I think any money you ask is almost done.
Well, if you're lucky, no one's asking for too little.
No, but I think the amount is, what was it, ninety grand?
Now you went by.
It didn't change. And that if one child or youth is prevented from going down the system, it's already paid back. So it's, I was wondering about the breakdown of the cost. Do you keep track of where these youth live? Do you allocate or try and get the different communities in counties in these towns?
We do, we do. So I'm speaking with the town Ignacio Board on Monday. Similarly, smaller populations obviously, right? And there's some nuanced things in Ignacio that's a little bit different. We haven't represented specifically for behavioral behavior to represent the more rural communities that are around the center. But what we're finding is sure, even if they're referred from other parts of the county, they're residing in some of the classes here.
Okay, well, I guess the only suggestion I might say is that if you feel that you can do better or if there's programs that you want to try, then I would definitely be interested in hearing about that.
I have a long list of events we could talk about, absolutely. And yeah, I mean, that's a key piece. And we're trying to get, you know, obviously this is more of a later intervention after you've created a couple. We also do offer referrals. So if parents are starting to suspect the possibility of down a different path, we've opened up opportunities for referrals to combat, which I know is, it's difficult because it's voluntary, right? So when there's not a little, there's not that force or subtle, yeah, I said subtle force, it's more difficult to get students in that. But what across OPYS, what we're really focusing on is correction. We launched three years ago a therapeutic school in collaboration with Durango PR.
That's, I was just saying, it's great.
It's nearly a two million dollar program right now. We just launched a full-time high school program and a lot of the students that we serve are adverse to being working in class. We're still really trying to get ahead of the curve and we know it's difficult.
Other questions? We appreciate your interest. All your career.
Thank you.
And I think that with the pandemic, you know, you saw the huge increase, but couple that with just the difficulty in making a living in town and getting by, we recognize it. So again, this is the budget that we set for the year, but if something is a great opportunity or something like that, you know, I can't speak for all council, but there's a process for actually making that known. So I mean, it doesn't mean the funding's there.
Sure.
But there's a process.
I appreciate that.
It's not a one, the door's not open just once a year.
Absolutely. Doesn't hurt to ask is always my motto.
Right.
You know, we served nearly a thousand years this year, which is great. Thank you all, really appreciate it.
Nice to meet you guys.
It's good to meet you.
Thank you.
And up next is United Way.
Lynn, thank you guys. Jason and Chris, thank you.
I do, we sent it in, but I also brought it on a phone back.
And Lynn, as I always say, we thank you for the information in advance.
Yes.
It's helpful to have it so that we can focus more on questions or anything that you might not have covered in the presentation.
Do you need this?
And you can get started.
So I'm Lynn Urban and I'm here also to represent Elise Sabastana, who manages this effort for us, but couldn't be here today. And following all those wonderful services is kind of hard, but I vouch for all of them. They're amazing and I'm so happy they're here in our community. And I encourage you to support them as much as you can. But I'm here to kind of talk about the network of all the nonprofits in our community and why it's important to support all of them. I was just thinking about my life in the last week and outside of my work at United Way. So if you take United Way out of the equation, I had experience with someone who received help with a domestic violence situation this week. Another individual who has a traumatic brain injury who was able, thank you, who was able to obtain Section eight housing, working with one of our housing nonprofits. I know of an individual who sat, who saw substance use disorder counseling as well as grief counseling for her situation. And I know a parent who was able to go back to work full-time because a slot opened up at a high-quality childcare facility. So these are just examples of how the nonprofits support people. This is just in my week, outside of my job. So these services, we rely on them. They're so critical to keep everything coming along, though we often don't think that because they're kind of running in the background like in my computer. So I want to thank the city of Durango for supporting our nonprofits because not every community steps up and does that. United Way has partnered with the city for about two decades to help provide informed, fair and accountable support to our nonprofits. We have a process, which I will race through because I think you guys know a lot of this and you have it. But we create an application, accept those. So those will be due October fourteenth. So we don't have all the applicants yet, so we don't have all that data to share with you. They'll be due November eighteenth. This year, we are recommending that those nonprofits that would normally apply for arts and culture dollars apply through a separate process that the city has established. And that will leave our human services, which is traditionally what this pot of money has usually gone to support. And usually we see about eighty to eighty-five percent of the applicants are coming from that sector. The environment and also a little bit of economic development are the types of applications we typically see. We recruit and manage a volunteer committee and we take recommendations, even self-recommendations if anyone wants to serve on that committee, to read all the applications, interview the applicants, deliberate together and come up with a set of recommendations for funding. We present those to council, we anticipate, or send them to you at least, we anticipate will happen by December seventh. And then we notify the awardees in January after your budget is all finalized. And then monthly, we process those reports, send them to the nonprofits. And then at the end of the year, we gather information for them for a final report. So that's our basic process. The part of it that, where we're interviewing the applicants, a lot of times applicants call it our speed dating. It's not all that different from this. And they have a short period of time, usually about five to seven minutes, to present their information to the committee. And we have often received comments like, whoa, that was fast. Ooh, I hope I said everything I needed to say. And a couple of complaints. So what we did in 2020 is we surveyed all the applicants about the process from start to finish, from the application itself to, you know, receiving the funding. And what we found was by and large, all the feedback was positive. There were only a couple of people who said, we wish we had a little more time. But we did take a couple of comments and use them to make the process better. So instead of asking them to do a presentation and then have about thirty seconds for questions, we changed it where it's focused on questions. So we are making sure that the committee members are doing all their homework in advance so they're not learning about the nonprofit for the first time right there. The other thing we did is we made the application electronic and savable and easy to use online. We are going to survey applicants again this year to keep making the process better and better. This year, we are requesting a slightly higher amount. We have traditionally, and for the last five years at least, requested just two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then our United Way fee is six percent. We, this year, we're going to ask for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And what we did is we looked at how much these nonprofits are requesting compared to how much we've been able to grant them. What is that gap every year? And the average over the last five years is an eighty-seven thousand dollars. And we also looked at their requests because sometimes what you see in grant making is people ask for a lot more because they know they might get less. And that's not what we're seeing with the city dollars. These nonprofits are asking for modest amounts, typically five to ten thousand dollars, and they're expecting to get less. And so we would like to start closing that gap a little bit. The other thing is some of these nonprofits leverage these funds two to four times. So they use it as a match with other grants. And so the more that we can provide to them, the more multiples that they can bring into the community. So we'd hate to leave those dollars on the table, but we've been doing that the last several years. So our proposal is for the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, we will decrease our United Way rate a bit so that we can put another forty-three thousand two hundred dollars into the pot for the nonprofits. And that closes that gap about halfway. And so we think that that would be a great place to be for this year. Again, you've been hearing it over and over, you know, the nonprofits are not immune to inflation, what we're seeing in the community. They're not immune to staffing shortages and they need to provide good incentives and benefits to their employees wherever they can. But the one thing that nonprofits can't do generally is raise prices. You don't have, in most cases, prices to rates. So all they can do is ask for more and that's what we're doing here. I think that's about it. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Lynn?
I am, I'll start again. Thank you, but I think it's great what you do. I had asked Jose for feedback on the amount of applicants, the amount of ask and the amount that you end up giving, which is partially woven in your presentation. I still am very curious to see that because if someone asks for five thousand, do you give them three thousand? Or do you say, well, we can give the first ten applicants the money and the rest falls away? And then, you know, what can we do? Do we need to do better? Just a little bit more insight, but in the end, this is what you're asking, this is what you get.
I can speak to that a little bit. I believe our, we're usually somewhere between twenty to twenty-five applicants. Sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less, but usually right in that range. We do not do a first come, first served. We do not do a first home first year basis. We evaluate all of the applications fully from what they're saying they do, what kind of results they show us from the past. We look at their financials to see if there's any red flags there. Or maybe they got a huge excess of funds that are undesigned and they can use it for whatever. So maybe this is not the year that they need an award. And so we look at all of that and then when the group starts deliberating, first we kind of ask the question, is there anybody that you don't think the city should fund this year? For whatever reason, maybe it wasn't a compelling, you know, ask. Or maybe sometimes, like I said, an organization will have a huge windfall. And we're like, you know, the money could probably be invested better somewhere else this year. So we kinda start there, like, is there anyone that maybe we should have fun? And then we start talking about, okay, which of these programs are just so critical and doing such a good job for our city that we should try to fund them their full ask? And so we usually kind of fill that in. And then we look at the dollars we have left and then we start getting into the nitpicky stuff. But that's generally how the process typically goes. So those programs that are supporting people in our community with high quality, they can demonstrate it, they're financially responsible, are typically those that are getting their full ask or close to their full ask if we can do it.
Well, thank you for clarifying that and for doing all that work, so that makes it a lot easier for us.
I do think we need to clarify for Lynn, she raised it, but she needs a consensus from us. She raised the question of removing arts and culture organizations from the applicant pool. And I just leaned over and asked Jessica, it looks like from the lodger's tax, arts and culture will receive about five hundred thousand dollars this first year. So is there council support to follow the suggestion to remove arts and culture from the application this year because of the lodger's tax support? Yeah, I think she needs that clarity before she goes into next week.
Do you ask in your application if they've received funding from elsewhere?
We look at their budgets. We don't ask specifically because most do receive funding from.
That's true.
We have found that the city funding is an average of about one point one percent of their budgets. So there's a lot of, of funding coming from elsewhere.
So the arts and culture funding hasn't always been in the packet.
Right.
It's fairly new. And I think it was to advocate for a specific reason. And we've, we've kind of fixed that reason, but with the lodger's tax, now there's funding out there. So I would, I would absolutely support that now you focus more on the social services and human services. Like this program was originally devised.
And make sure if someone does apply for this, encourage them to, yeah, because we'll have another round, I think, coming out in January.
Absolutely, that makes sense to me.
So you have that clarity. I think I support it, I think, yeah.
So you just have nods all around it?
Yeah. I think that was the one point I heard from all of it, is that you needed that.
Right, I should have lifted that up a little bit more.
That's all right.
We heard it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you do to manage it. And I just wanna also point out that council used to, at some points, go through this process themselves in the time. And, and as you say, we said about other things, we're not experts either. So that's what I, one of the things I really appreciate, United Way and your willingness to do that.
And your volunteers' willingness, because I know they're not paid to do this, they come together.
You know, they love it. They always comment that they learned so much that they weren't aware within our community. And often then they become dedicated volunteers and supporters of some of these organizations.
And I love that you're cutting your percentage a little bit to help us get to that point. It just shows that such a team, you know, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. All right, I keep on that, we can adjourn and we'll be back here at five thirty.